Why don't we go ahead and get started if we can? I know everyone is not here. I've heard from Dave Snyder, who is stuck on Metro, and I imagine some others have similar difficulties. I appreciate everyone coming out on a difficult night, and sorry for the late notice yesterday about the meeting, but I think we made the best decision and the right decision. But why don't we go ahead and get started with our meeting tonight? I imagine people will continue to show up, but let's get started with the January 22nd Joint Work Session between the City Council and Planning Commission. This will be followed by a City Council work session immediately following. So, why don't we go ahead and get started? Ms. Messner or Mr. Shields, do you want to get started? The first item on the agenda?
Well, I am actually -- thank you Mayor Tarter. I'm going to turn it over to Jim Snyder for our planning-related items. So, we'll start with the Mobility for All Modes, which is a proposed chapter to the comprehensive plan. And the request is that that be -- that the council give us -- give staff authority to refer that out to boards and commissions, and that'll be followed by the downtown area similarly asking for the council to allow staff to refer that out for comment before it comes back to you in a more final draft. So, let me ask Jim Snyder to take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the Planning Commission, and also Paul Baldino is here from the CACT. I did hand out to you a set of talking points that Paul Stoddard, who is the chief planner on this, has put together. He would like to be here. He had a -- well, he had a conflict, so I wanted to make sure you had this. This will be helpful to us as we walk through it. As Mr. Shields said, we are looking to take the draft Transportation Chapter of the comp plan and ask your concurrence to distribute it out for boards and commissions for review before final advertising and consideration by the Planning Commission and City Council. As you know, there's been a lot of work done on the -- in the transportation area. We are also updating our comprehensive plan, and you should have in your package a picture or copy of the draft Chapter 7. That's a different format than we've had in the past. It's designed to provide a framework for transportation items, and it would be -- it's also an example of the new design that we're looking at for the comprehensive plan. As you know, the comprehensive plan is in need of update. It was last done in 2005, and we are trying to work through chapters with the Planning Commission on that. You'll notice the change in the -- or in addition, I guess, to the name, Transportation Chapter Mobility for All Modes. And the -- there's a vision statement here, which I think is worth looking at. Providing for the safe movement of people and goods within and through the city via transportation network that connects to the regional transportation network and offers choices in travel modes, supports economic activity, is sensitive to the environment, and provides equitable access for all city residents, workers, and visitors. The point being that transportation is multimodal. Everyone's a pedestrian. Many people are drivers. Folks use transit. We need to make all of these things work as well as they can for our small city and relate and connect to our neighbors. We are in an area, in a region, where population employment is growing. We know Tyson's Corner and the Rosen Ballistic Quarter in downtown, there is a lot of growth. We have had concerns from residents about traffic calming and parking. Six requests this year for traffic calming in 2013. We have been working with the Planning Commission and the CACT, I think, in a very collaborative fashion, having work sessions with them, and in some cases, joint work sessions. September, we began our evaluation of how had we done on the goals and objectives that were in the Transportation Chapter. Then, we had a work session with the Planning Commission in September. In October, we had a work session with the CACT. Then, in November, there was a joint work session with the Planning Commission and the CACT, and Vice Mayor Snyder actually joined us for that session as well, representing the council in his role as liaison. And then, in November, there was a work session with the council to come -- to agree or consider concurrence with the concept of a proactive approach for planning and improvements in commercial corridors with more of a responsive -- response to community requests for improvements in residential areas. In December, we had a joint work session with the Planning Commission, the CACT. January 11th, a Saturday, we had a well-attended community meeting. Survey results for that are included in your package. As we look forward, we are looking to, again, get additional comments, make adjustments to this plan, engage with boards and commissions. Vipas has reached out to us. We'll be making presentations to them, talking to the Chamber of Commerce as well as PTAs. In terms of the plan itself, we're trying to identify priorities. We're trying to track progress on specifics. It's not an implementation plan per se. It is a framework within which other plans can be developed and adopted. The best example of that recently was the Bus Stop and Bus Shelter Master Plan, where a lot of work was done, plan was adopted, and so that is a piece that will help provide guidance for that aspect of the city's transportation network. Other examples could become a Bicycle Facilities Plan. We're identifying there's a need for one, but we're not looking at -- we're not identifying at this point specific routes or facilities. Those would have to come through additional work. There is the vision statement and goals. There is a breakdown of transportation needs by mode. We're looking at having a breakdown of needs and actions and projects. In terms of the goals, on page two of the talking points, those are specified out. Increasing transportation safety, multiple options for travelers with travel modes for pedestrians, bicycle, transit, and automobile. Importantly, supporting economic activity so that there's better access for city businesses and by creating better access to our activity centers. Doing this in a way that mitigates environmental damage from transportation and transportation infrastructure, all the while preserving the character of the different residential neighborhoods in the city and trying to provide equity in terms of transportation options by considering all travelers and their various needs, including those who have disabilities or limited mobility and those who have language -- have limited or no English language proficiency, or those who frankly are unable to drive at this point or unwilling to drive. So, we have -- we have put this together. We think it's a good format. We request your concurrence to distribute it out for further review. It will come back with formal advertising with proposed changes and be heard by the Planning Commission and City Council before final adoption. So, I'd be happy to take any questions. Again, I'm the B team. This is Paul Stoddard, and the CACT and the Planning Commission's work with guidance from the manager and our department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. Why don't we go ahead and start with the Planning Commission? Ms. Rogers, do you want to start or have your folks start?
Okay. I'll start, and there are some things I think need to change. But I think in the main, my only concern about it, I like the format, but I do have a concern that the tone is a little bit -- I know we're trying to get it to be friendly, but because we use it as part of our comp plan, and we look at our comp plan when we're doing special exceptions, I think that we could get some of the things that we want from developers as far as transportation. You know, funnel it into this chapter as well as making it friendly to citizens. It's just something that I think we need to think of as we're going through the entire comp plan update. That's my comment.
Okay. Do you want to maybe start, one end or the other, with maybe Andy or?
Any comments on this? And you have a microphone.
I did, but I know you did your homework.
I don't have any comments right now, though. I got them.
I think it's excellent. I think it's a good start, and I think we do need to hear everybody's input on it because we have future for the -- for our future.
And I mentioned this to Paul Stoddard, too, but I do think my big comment on it is the timeframe for a lot of these things is short-term, and I think that's because Paul feels like we really need to do most of this stuff right away, and I agree with him, but I do -- I think that we need to either come up with a reference between very short and short or something, because we can't do everything short-term. We don't have enough staff to do it all. So, I think that -- and if you look at the old -- the current comprehensive plan, we have accomplished a lot of the actions in there, but most of them weren't done very quickly. It took time, and I think -- so, I think that we should be more cognizant of the timeframe issue here and not set up an expectation that we can do all these things in short-term, because I don't think we have the staff to do it. But generally, I like the plan. The public meeting we had on the 11th went really well, and I'm looking forward to this going out to the other boards and commissions, because I think we do need that greater viewpoint from the community. And so, I'm kind of waiting -- you know, I don't have any other real specific comments, but I'm looking forward to hearing what the rest of the community thinks about it.
Okay. Why don't we start with council? Phil, do you want to?
Thank you. Just one thing. I know the Transportation Committee over the last few months has been hearing from -- pardon my frog voice, I've got a cold -- has been hearing from a number of neighborhoods about traffic calming requests. I just wonder if Mr. Baldino here for the CACT has any thoughts about whether this document process seems responsive to the sorts of things that have been heard on his committee for the last few months.
Well, in answer to your question.
Can we comment? We can come up with a comment.
Sure. Typically, we don't have comments from the audience, but I think it's appropriate in this circumstance unless anyone objects. Please, Paul, go ahead.
Well, in answer to your question, and in keeping with the idea that the Transportation Chapter is a policy guide, the policy address in there is that we want to look at the existing traffic calming process and to begin to determine whether or not we've got a process that is addressing issues street by street and effectively becoming kind of a whack-a-mole situation where we address speeding or other safety problem on one street, which pushes traffic to an adjoining street. So, what is specified in the plan is that we will study and look at an alternative to the existing traffic calming program, and one example that Paul Stoddard has identified is being used in Arlington. I'm not at all familiar with it, but it's certainly worth looking at. But our thought is, we're going to be -- we and staff are going to be overwhelmed by traffic calming requests as traffic volumes increase on our streets, and it's absolutely true that we have more and more young kids playing in those streets, and it's sensitized a lot of neighbors. So, we need to find something that can be more responsive and have a broader view than the existing policy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Karen, comments?
I guess my general comment just has to do with communication and reaching out to the community. I would maybe disagree that the January 11th meeting was well-attended, and I would like to see a better attendance at the February meeting. And I don't know, other than, you know, public notices do not necessarily draw in uninformed community members that might have an opinion. So, one of my biggest concerns, as I read through all of this, just was related to that communication element, and also questions that came up for me about, I understand that we have traffic calming requests, and I just was less clear about where requests for improved pedestrian access or improved bicycle access, how that came into the system and how we captured that data. And I guess one statistic I wonder if we have is the average distance from the distant -- the average distance from a household in Falls Church to a public transport entry point.
Any response or that coming a later date?
Yeah, those are good questions. One thing, I'd say two things. One, I echo Mr. Baldino's comments about being overwhelmed by traffic calming requests. We do get a lot of them. They're very difficult to administer because they always attract a great deal of community passion. So, street by street, you have very typically very strong divisions of opinion on the street as to whether anything should change at all. And that's true for traffic calming. It's also true for new sidewalks for pedestrian improvements. We will continue to receive traffic calming applications and process those, and we hope to make improvements for traffic calming through that process. Pedestrian improvements, though, we are beginning to communicate out, and we did that with the discussion of this plan earlier, that our focus on terms of money and staff time for pedestrian improvements will be in our commercial districts. That is where we have some of our most egregious pedestrian deficiencies, I would argue, and our greatest opportunities to make real visible impactful improvements. But two, from a staff resource perspective, these pedestrian improvements in the neighborhoods are extraordinarily time-consuming. And so, we have a grant for the West Street Project, and we know that that's not unanimously -- you know, the views on the street are not unanimous about that project. Some want it to be much more ambitious than it is. Some would like a very different type of project altogether. We do want to carry through on that project and finish it, but -- and similarly with the Roosevelt Street Project, those are both grant-funded. We want to execute those, but then keep our focus on the commercial districts unless otherwise directed by the City Council.
Mary Beth?
Yes. Thank you. I like this plan. I was also at the January 11th meeting, and Karen and I didn't talk about this, but my concern is also the limited number of citizens who were there, and I think that it's -- it was a Saturday morning, and it's hard to get people places, and I know that. And I think there are a lot of -- I'm really heartened to see that you're going to reach out to the PTAs and the Chamber of Commerce, and I think there's a lot of other ways to reach people in the community and as a city. We need to do that on a lot of projects, not this one in particular. And there are a lot of things that will affect individual neighborhoods, and people will be concerned about traffic and biking and all that stuff, and I think we need to say to people, come -- because this is actually going to affect you in your everyday life every day, which is much more interesting than come and review the comprehensive transportation plan chapter. So, I think we can make that a lot more compelling to get a lot more community input, because I do think the community piece, as Melissa said, is really important.
Nader?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. One, just overall about the plan, I think it's headed in the right direction. I think, and I just, if I can get some clarification, this was intended to be a higher-level plan. Is that right, Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Okay.
A framework for additional work to be done on specific pieces of transportation.
And then, there's a couple of areas.
Such as the bus shelter plan, which a lot of work was done.
And I think there's a couple of areas. For example, one that I'm particularly interested in, which is the bike projects and the sharrows. I think the sharrows are a great concept. The one question that I'd be interested in getting staff comments on and also public comments on and Planning Commissioner comments on is sort of what's, as far as the bike plan goes and the sharrows and the bike route, what's the purpose? Are we trying to get from point A to point B, hit the commercial corridors, try to hit the existing arteries and collectors, and also provide another avenue? It just, there's a couple of pieces missing. For example, when I look at the existing auto infrastructure and collector streets that I know head to the metro or other places, that doesn't necessarily match up with the sharrows and the bike plan. So, I hope that there's just some synergy, and we understand what the purpose of the bike plan is, whether it's movement of people along where they would normally be going via vehicular traffic, or if it's, you know, to get them through the retail areas of the city. If that can just be articulated. Those are all the comments that I have.
And particularly in the bicycle planning, the -- I think the existing conditions show the arrangement of it. What you'll notice in that map, I think, is that we aren't connected to the neighbor -- the neighboring jurisdictions. This is on a page that shows existing conditions for bicycles. This is the existing plan, and so I think one of the things that will have to be looked at as that plan is developed is, how does it connect to the neighboring bicycle routes within the communities around us? That's important, as well as answering the questions that you asked for. So, this, at this point, just shows where we are presently, and those are very good questions for us to consider as we develop that plan.
Yeah. And specifically, my comments was -- were also to the planned project, which dealt with the sharrows.
I think we are looking more at sharrows as an approach as opposed to lanes, and we -- there were approvals, I think, for the one on Park Avenue that were approved recently, that one facility.
Anything else? Dan?
Speaker, Mayor. I think that what we have in front of us at this point, I believe, is to understand straightforward and very practical.
Two different colors of green. As a planning document, a framework for policy, I think it meets my test of being easy to understand. It's readable and straightforward. These are all virtues. I'm glad someone else mentioned the number-one item that was on my list with regard to traffic calming more importantly. How do we interface our quiet residential neighborhoods with more development on our major streets? I think others will address that. I think that, in my mind, the greatest lack here is that it just doesn't reach far enough into the future. It doesn't talk about alternative fueling infrastructure, how we accommodate electric cars. I don't know whether there's a place here for parking, but I think policy statements need to be made, at least to provide the basis for latches to other plans or to call for those kinds of thinking. Parking structures and how, therefore, parking enforcement, the use of RFID for residents in the city, you know, could be one -- could be addressed here. And I think that probably the biggest thing that -- and I'm not even so sure that it belongs here besides just teeing up the conversation is sometime in some comprehensive plan, we need to address what happens with Route 7 going forward. So, if we don't address that now, people are going to ask, why didn't we take that opportunity? Thank you.
And I think we are looking forward with the studies that are being done with Route 7. They're, I believe, in the second phase now of a regional look at Route 7. So, there'll be hopefully updates on that that we can, as those are accomplished, we can bring to council.
Thank you. I have a few comments and questions. I guess for starters, Michael Collins, I think, is a new hire as Director of Public Works, who'll be doing a lot of the implementation, I think, of the things that are in this plan. So, I don't know if you've met council before, or council's met you in the Planning Commission, but if you could just stand up for a second, we could just say welcome to you and thank you for coming on board. You sound like a great hire.
Sharon, I wore my fancy clothes. It's snowplow clothes.
Thank you. I know a lot of this probably ultimately, at least the small details, will fall to you to implement, so I'm looking forward to working with you, as I think we all are. This is a point that Nader mentioned, maybe a slightly different way, but connecting the bike trail to the downtown, in other words, drawing bicycle traffic into our commercial areas. I saw sort of a truce mentioned to it, but it didn't seem like it was directly addressed. Is that something that you all are considering? In other words, how to get people from the trail to the commercial areas, spend tax dollars or spend dollars here in Falls Church?
Yes, and I think the most recent action on that was an approval of a plan to bring bicycles down Park Avenue using a shero system and down Maple Avenue into the downtown area. And I think as we look at the overall plan as it is developed, connecting to our neighbors where routes exist, but kind of dead-end when they hit the city, and then finding ways to help people get to destinations with -- have the option of not having to use a car, maybe get there more quickly and safely with a bicycle, because we are a small place. So, I think that will be something that we'll see as that plan is developed, and Mr. Baldino and others may have comments on that.
Yeah. Paul, go ahead.
One of the first things we would like to see come out of this plan is a Bicycle Facilities Plan, and we see it as having three goals. The Bicycle Facilities, the goal would be to -- the goals would be to connect, of course, to the existing trails and routes that other jurisdictions have, to get our citizens to and from public transit sites, especially the metro stations, and to get folks to and from the commercial areas. So, that's our goal. We made an initial approach successfully to the Economic Development Authority just to get us started with some sharrows, and they have agreed to funding for sharrows to go on Park and Maple Avenues, which are certainly corridors that will be of value, but it was really just a starting point. They have also agreed to fund signage to get people from the trail to our commercial areas. So, we think we've got that in mind, but what, as in many areas of the plan, we've outlined a policy here. The Facilities Plan is the one that's going to tell us exactly how it will work.
I think along the lines of what you just mentioned, also maybe what Dan mentioned, anything about capital bike share or any kind of bike share facilities? I didn't see that directly mentioned either.
Well, we definitely have identified it in various plans as something we think makes sense. I think it's been a question of when the city feels it's appropriate to do and when they can afford it. Also, connectivity to the Arlington system, which will necessitate them bringing it out to East Falls Church. So, I think bike share is something we're aware of. We think it's, at some point, it will be here in the city. The question is, it's a budget issue, and it's a timing issue, and connectivity to Arlington where, you know, that would be our point of contact, if you will, our easiest point of contact at the East Falls Church Metro Station. So, we think in the future, it's definitely an important thing. Also, I think it's been identified in some of the site plans as places where we would want them to provide a possibility of an easement for some future bike share location. I believe it is identified and talked about in the plan itself. So, it's definitely a future item that we're aware of and think will be important in the future.
It's a proposed action on page 10.
And also, if I can just add something, the EDA has been quite active with this situation. And the one thing that keeps coming up with a lot of different groups that I think we've got to get a handle on and get coordinated is wayfinding that everybody wants to have, and if we don't get going on coordinating it all, it's going to be a hodgepodge. But the EDA has already acted on doing some funding for that, as Mr. Baldino said, and for the sharrows. So, there is a start, and there's a lot of interest, and the EDA has also done a lot of meetings with Capital Bike Share.
One other thing in terms of connecting to our business areas, there is very -- a lot of interest, and Mr. Baldino's done a lot of work on this with CACT in upgrading and improving the WOD trail and the facilities on it for bicyclists and pedestrians. Connecting that major pedestrian and bicycle great street, if you will, with Washington Street and Broad Street, because it kind of cuts staggeringly across the city, I think is a strategy that could very well help accomplish what you're looking at, and this first step with Park is designed to help accomplish that. There will be a need for investment to make improvements on the WOD and also to promote this connectivity. So, those are things we'll have to look at in future, as future CIP items or other public investment. Or, as was mentioned by the commission, perhaps things are done by developers as a part of a special exception or a site plan.
Right. Okay. Why don't we go ahead? I know you've got a comment, Karen, but why don't we just go around the room real quick if anyone has additional comments? Working away from Andy, wrapping around to Dan.
I generally think it's a good plan. I think people have talked about there is where it needs to be beefed up. I think that, you know, we shouldn't -- I don't think we should delay it too much just to get everything perfect, so I think that happens sometimes. So, I think we should push forward with this and improve it as we go.
The Park -- or the Virginia Park Authority is also doing some projects on the bike trail within the city of Falls Church. So, there's all kinds of things like that going on.
I just wanted to piggyback on what people were saying about the Bicycle Facilities Plans. You mentioned connecting to neighboring trails, public transit, and the commercial district. I would like to specifically call out connecting to the schools. I think that's one of the critical needs.
And the Safe Roots to School project is all about that, as long as, you know, as well as our PAWS program and things like that, but very good.
Additional?
Yeah, so I just wanted -- oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Mary Beth. Sorry.
I have one more question. It's on page 16 about the transit projects, planned transit projects. We have the East Falls
We have the East Falls Church Metro second entrance. What's the status of that? Is that, we wish for that? We, is it, we keep wishing for it?
It is an, it's a wishlist. It's an expensive project. We are working with Arlington and trying to keep our eye on the ball in terms of if there are any developments. At this point, I think it's a question of how does it get built? It may need more regional effort, if you will. So we might try to look at strategies, particularly connecting the WOD trail, which is a regional park, in our own interest and need, and Arlington, I think is a standalone name for Arlington, it's going to be hard to get done.
I think that would be.
So it needs more of a regional, more of a regional backing, I think.
Mayor, if I just could add to Mr. Snyder's point, we've been working with NVTA and with our three council reps that will participate. With the new 70% money, we've started the dialogue with our neighbors and metro about whether we can fund something like that. But it's in the very early stages since that money's just now on the table.
One more question related to the transit. And I think this might have been in the downtown area plan. There was something about a shuttle, business shuttle. That wasn't in this one, right? The possibility, the potential of being able to connect Broad Street to metro stations. Is that in the other plan?
I think it may have been in the other plan. One of the issues of shuttles or circulators is the expense. They're really good ideas. You need certain critical mass for them to work and to be able to pay for them. And so some of these are ideas that need to be pursued more from concept to how could they work in reality? Could we afford them and what would they actually accomplish? So they are worth pursuing. It's not certain that you would necessarily have a circulator or a shuttle. But it's one of the techniques that's used to get people to a station that's close, but not, maybe not close enough for everybody to walk to.
Nader?
This is more of an issue we don't need to discuss tonight, but since Mary Beth raised it, I think it's important to get a future briefing by staff and the manager about this. And this has to do with the air rights over 66. There was a proposal out there on that. As I last recall, there would be a potential option if that plan ever came to fruition. It's a long-term plan to add the new metro entrance through that. I think staff was directed to look at that as a possibility. So if we can get a future briefing on that, because there may be an opportunity if that moves forward. And then similar to that, at one point, we had discussed special taxing areas for commercial corridors and transportation. And I think staff was going to work with the chamber, the EDA and others to come up with concrete items. So, you know, one that would just looked at was, you know, our fair share of a second metro entrance. So if we can get a briefing on that, that's something that we may want to kick over to the Economic Development Committee of the council at some point. And then just on the bikes, I just wanted to echo the comments and Dave and Karen. Thanks for sort of filling in the thoughts that I had. And what I marked down just for policy issues was bikes, connecting to other jurisdictions. How do we bring bikes into our commercial corridors? And then three, how do we leverage existing safe streets, the school monies that we have with connecting to schools and bikes?
Dan, additional comments?
Only one final one, which is that I agree with Mr. Rankin that we should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And we need to get this out there, socialize and improve and get it done.
Well, to that, I'm sorry, Mr. Shields?
And to that point, just process-wise, we are asking for the council to authorize staff kind of informally to get this out in boards and commissions. And when I say kind of informally, when you have a new interim city attorney, you discover things that you weren't aware of before. And one of those is the city council formally refers this to the planning commission. The planning commission has 60 days to act on it and get it back to the city council, or it's automatically adopted. We do want some more time on this one. We're proposing that this come back to the council on May 5th after budget is done and then be adopted in May. And so if it's formally referred out, we have a procedural problem. And so I just note that, and that's why our request is formal, informal referral.
Okay. Well, do we have a consensus to informally distribute this to staff? It sounds like, it sounds like we do. Yes, so I think there's your answer, Wyatt.
I wish I would have known that earlier. When I was mayor, we would have got a lot done.
That's right.
John didn't tell us that before.
That was held over the planning commission's head in the past, but I guess you didn't.
Nobody told, nobody, I didn't get that memo, Melissa.
No, we had that happen before. We were told, you have 60 days. You better move it.
Okay. Why don't we go on to the next item? Maybe Wyatt or Cindy, you could go ahead and get us started, or Jim?
Again, I'd like to just turn this over to Jim to talk about the process we've gone through to get to this point and some highlights of the plan. And I'll try to walk you through, we've, you have a copy, I believe, of the plan itself, the draft plan. And based on the meeting that we had, we made some changes. We also got some other comments from commissioners and staff. It's been reformatted to be laid out in a fashion similar to the other plans with chapters on land use and zoning, et cetera. And so we want to move ahead with it. Again, refer it out or informally pass it out so we can get more comments. Then come back to you and the planning commission with formal advertising for consideration for adoption. So looking at the graphic on the screen, if you will, this is, if you can see that, this is the, this is kind of our plan for planning, if you will, with the various opportunity areas. We have approved, city councils approved North Washington Street, South Washington Street. And we're working on downtown Falls Church. You'll notice the new name. And it's one of several opportunity areas that we're looking at. We have draft schedules. We're looking to try to finish this in March or sooner, or sometime this spring, if you will. And Cindy, if you can, looking at kind of the timeline, South Washington Street has been approved. We had a kickoff meeting for this plan in June. We developed the draft plan. We had a meeting in November. Several of you were in attendance. And then looking, and we've developed kind of a timeline of moving forward. If we can just keep going now. So we're looking to complete these, again, hoping to finish this in March, April. Need to get it out to other groups for further comment. This will finish the Washington Street corridor. We met in June at Columbia Baptist. We had presentations, looked at existing conditions, brainstormed ideas, came up with a concept or presented the concept of the core commercial area and the core entertainment area. We had breakout discussions with the community on a number of topics from culture and community, land use, high-density, open space, transportation. This next slide shows the area itself, shown in red here. Just in terms of landmarks, there's Bowl America. This is the old post office and Anthony's, former Anthony's Restaurants, George Mason Square. This is Maple Avenue, Washington and Broad, the Kaiser Garage. So you can see this is really the heart of the city, the main intersection and the areas around it. Next. These are slides, just giving you a feel of what's out there. This is Park Avenue, the State Theater. This is, I believe, Burke and Herbert Bank on Broad Street. So you can get a feel for the area. Go ahead. This is, again, Broad Street with trees and one-story commercial areas. This is some of the parking area for George Mason Square and parking lots adjacent to office buildings, Annandale Road. Again, this is Broad Street where the Harris Teeter Rushmark Project will be built. George Mason Square, this is the Robertson family owns this property. It's an office building. Applebee's is down the street. This is, I believe, the, this is Independence Square, which are townhouses and condominium offices on the opposite corner from George Mason Square. And of course, here is Brown's Hardware on the corner, which is one of the community landmarks. Looking at existing land use, we have 47 acres on 11 city blocks. A mixture of office in blue, retail in light brown. So you can see there's some retail in here along Broad and have offices kind of along Park. This is Kaiser right here. And then more offices between Maple and Washington, Broad and going to the south. Next. Mostly it's Zone B2. Buildings, though, range from one to five stories in height. Existing zoning allows 75 feet by right, with a special exception, it can go up to 115 feet, seven to 10 stories. Again, there's discretion on the part of planning commission and council on that. Next. As you can see, looking at buildings which are in white and then the dark areas are the parking areas. There's not a really great pattern here, a lot of kind of interspersing of parking and buildings. There's not a consistent street wall, a lot of land use for parking. And parking is generally privately owned and privately managed, not shared. There are some structures, the garage here, I think this is Kaiser and this is George Mason Square. And we have, we are making progress in being able to use these, some of these facilities publicly. Next. The existing floor ratio is .54. That's higher than some of the other opportunity areas, but low generally. Two and a half is a good standard for more urban suburban office areas. If you look at values, this is kind of where the tax-based implications. The land's worth 92 million. The buildings are worth 71 million. We've got land value exceeding building value. You know, that's indication of not good performance. Next. There has been a lot of work. Previous plans have been approved, going all the way back into the 50s and then the 60s, 70s, 80s, the 2000s. And then the city center plan, which was poised to happen, but ran into, you know, bad economy and didn't happen. 2010, Virginia Tech took a look at kind of the, what we're calling the core entertainment area and did a little city center plan, trying to, how could we work with what's there that people like? Next. The idea of trying to leverage existing unique businesses. When I got here and we started talking with a lot of people, I heard a lot of, and I'm sure you have too, a lot of people love some of our independent businesses. They love to go to the state theater. They like to go to Dogwood. They like to go to Claire and Don's. They use Brown's Hardware. They go to Doodle Hopper. Mr. Tarter particularly was a fan of Doodle Hopper before I came here. He told me all about it. We have local banks. So it's the small businesses, the place, and you've talked to people from outside the area and they want to come to, they go to the antique store. They go to these unique places that aren't found in the malls. That's part of what makes this kind of the heart of the city. So we want to leverage and work on those independent businesses and help expand them or add to them restaurants and entertainment or something which is not going out of style. Retail, as you may know, is going through a whole change. People still like to go out and eat and they like to be entertained. They like to do it within their neighborhood. So we want to work with that idea. Next. So looking to try to, in the draft plan, we've tried to look at a blend of existing community conditions, get community feedback, see if we can expand the unique existing businesses, provide open space and connections, consolidate parking, create additional pedestrian bicycle connections. You can walk through this area, but it's not welcoming. It's kind of a maze, in a sense. Next. When we, when we were talking about this, some of the ideas were, if you define downtown Falls Church, what are the things that count? Land use. We want complimentary live, work, play and shop. We need a core commercial area where there's enough critical mass to make things work. Entertainment is a theme. We hear about state theater. People go out to eat. They like to do both things in the same evening. We have, we have first night where we close things down and have a lot of activity. There is some need for mixed use to complement this. We want high-quality urban design, streetscape and architecture. And we're looking more at a revitalization, redevelopment approach, more organic rather than a very large plan, which sometimes are terrific, but sometimes fail because it's hard to put everything together and missing pieces can keep the plans from happening. So trying to grow from our existing strengths and let things like the plaza, the outdoor deck and plaza area at Dogwood Tavern, that was done, a small thing, but those who've been there are enjoying it and it's a way an existing business can expand, provide more service to their customers. So looking forward, this is showing the idea of kind of the mixed-use area, which includes the Harris Teeter Rushmark. And then we have the Burke and Herbert Bank, which we hope could redevelop, including the bank with a drive-through approach. The BB&amp;T Bank, similar thing. We're working with Atlantic. They are interested in developing, upgrading their parking garage and upgrading this area with retail and possibly hotel. Something will happen to the Bowl America site. This is looking at tapering, some kind of tapering of, you know, to the park and the neighborhood. And being able to fill in pieces where we have blanks. So these are examples of infill possible parking garage. Just trying to show a concept of what could happen, fill in those parking lots you saw in earlier slides. Forward. The idea of a core commercial area where we'd have predominantly office, commercial, retail and hotel. This spans two opportunity areas. This is South Washington Street, Tanner Hill, Washington Street, Maple, Broad. This is Annandale. This is an area that's historically had office buildings in it, but it's never fully developed. It has great access by means of streets going through it and around it. It's easy to get to and in and out of. You have access on Broad, but you're not hemmed in by Broad. And you're, you're in an area where density could happen without unduly impacting residential neighborhoods around it. So this is a, we think this is an ideal place to cluster office, retail and hotel, have the highest density in the city. The approval of the South Washington Street plan, which kind of breaks right here, incorporated this concept. Next. We're looking at trying, maybe there's a way to develop existing parking lots. You know, take asphalt and turn it into spaces for people to have businesses. Create connections, pedestrian and otherwise, through what are now parking lots. Next. The core entertainment area, we're really looking at the area from Little Falls, Broad, past the Applebee's and going up to Park. Looking at this area, we have a lot of businesses people value. Having a continued mix of restaurant and retail and entertainment, moderate density, scaling it to surrounding development. And this is all within the downtown. This is, you know, this is where people like to hang out. We'd like to give them more reasons to do that. Next. So how do you do that? Well, you work with people to try to fill in some of the blanks. You have more shared parking. Perhaps we can do parking garages. We own this property, for example, where people can park. Recently, economic development has gotten agreements with Kaiser to use their garage. The idea being people park and walk and more things to walk to, rather than park, move, park, you know, and have people trying to tow your car if you're parked in the wrong space and visiting the neighboring business. So trying to have more of a shared approach here. Looking at possible vertical or horizontal expansion of existing buildings. So this is trying to fill in those spaces. And you can see, instead of alleyways, looking at maybe pedestrian connections, making this more green and more walkable. Next. On the other side, to the south of Broad, this is looking at where the Burke and Herbert site is, Bowl America, the property that Atlantic controls. There certainly is a lot of potential of this area to be filled in. Of course, it would have to go through special exception and site plan processes with the council and planning commission. So there'll be good opportunities to look at design and buffering and streetscape, et cetera. But right now, we have a lot of parking lots, some older buildings. This is certainly, as this fills in with, along with the Harris Teeter, will provide a lot of people and activity that we think will complement the core entertainment area. Next. In terms of transportation, how do we move people? Well, you know, we look, we need to look at shared parking and garages. For pedestrians, we need to make it safer to walk around and connect from place to place. One of the interesting things we were doing, the Harris Teeter and the other grocery store, found that in both cases, within a half mile, you had 6,000 residents at the front door of those stores. We hope we can get people to walk to shop. And in some cases, that can be faster than driving. Bike share is important. Again, connectivity, as we talked about earlier in the evening, providing new bus shelters. So it's more attractive and frankly, you aren't getting rained on. And possibly a shuttle in metro. There has been some talk about working with Arlington on the art bus. We already have some, and the potential of a high-capacity service along Route 7, whether it's bus rapid transit or some future streetcar. Looking at connectivity, here's a graphic which shows examples of how that might work. Again, possible bicycle routes, possible mid-block connections. This is, for example, I'm looking at how do you, how do you, people do this informally now. This is in between Park and Broad. Here is Maple. And certainly making Park a more attractive street. And then if we can provide bus shelters and other transit facilities, hopefully people will use, take more advantage of that. Also, the idea of providing parking garages, these are some of the places those could occur. In terms of parking, we, that was mentioned earlier in the evening, is there potential for city-owned garages? We have successfully, I think, worked with Kaiser to help share that garage. The idea I mentioned earlier, parking and walking, if garages are built, is there opportunity for rooftop recreation on top of them or, and/or retail wrapping the parking structure, so we don't just have a parking structure, but something that has additional benefits? Earlier was mentioned, Route Seven, there is the High Capacity Transit Study, the regional study, looking to connect communities along Route Seven from Alexandria out to Tyson's Corner, city has been active in that, Phase One has been done, Phase Two is ongoing, I think the council provided input to that, and there is a look, one of the things that being looked at is a connection to East Falls Church Metro and back to Route Seven, and some of the modes could be from bus rapid transit to streetscar. We looked at community character, again, trying to connect small businesses and events, there's, you know, I think this is a community which really does a good job of promoting activities, getting people involved, there are a lot of fun things going on that Chamber promotes and that others promote, First Fridays. Looking at improving Park Avenue, which is well-loved and well-used but isn't as attractive as it might be, could it become a great street? Fairfax Street, which is the historic Rolling Road, which is very, in great need of improvement, is there potential to do both a stormwater project and improve it with pedestrian lighting and pedestrian and bicycle access and street trees, so it could be a place where we could have activities from time to time. There may need to be some zoning changes to provide more flexibility for expanding some of these businesses that are on small lots and providing signing and outdoor uses, perhaps, for example, properties that are adjacent to one another could share parking in terms of how it's credited rather than each one having to stand alone on its, for, to meet its parking requirements, or flexibility for parking requirements if we have garages that can provide some of that parking. Next. There may be places for pocket parks, there's this little parking lot right now, which in the city center plan was showing possible park. We've talked in the South Washington Street Plan about future use of Virginia Village over long, over time, there may be pedestrian quarters that can be added in the core entertainment area, Rolling Road, Fairfax Street, which also goes over in front of the historic Falls Church. How could that be improved in a way where you really know that it's an historic street because of the way it's designed and built, and it could be a place for activities to take place from midweek farmers' markets to art fairs to, I think there, I was told there used to be, was it court days, or there were certain activities, historic days that used to take place on the street, no longer happen, but, you know, connecting with other history, here's the historic place, how do we connect it to it? We need to make that place a better place so we can do more with it. There are interim improvements to be made, whether it's small public investments that help attract larger private investment, that might be streetscape improvements or new lighting, how do we, can we improve the quality of life for area residents, workers and visitors? So, targeting, we're looking now at CIP to see what kinds of projects can be done to make improvements, and then phased redevelopment can help make incremental changes where the first project does a piece and an adjacent project could do the next piece, I think this is getting to what the Planning Commission was talking about of how do developments help implement some of the transportation improvements, whether it's pedestrian bicycle or other improvements. Next. In terms of implementation tools, we have the CIP, which will be Cindy Mester's working on, and we'll be going to the Planning Commission next week for work session and later to the council. Future land use map will need to be adjusted, we can work with the zoning ordinance to tweak the districts we have and provide overlays within them, and there are financing incentives, potentially TIFs, and we also have, I believe, incentives for rehabbing older buildings where they can get some tax credits. We'll need to do some, a follow-up meeting with some of the area stakeholders in terms of how would that be, how would that take place? At the November meeting, we had breakout discussion groups on these topics, the next slides will show some of the things we heard in those breakout sessions. Community and culture, central plazas, design guidelines, upgrading existing buildings so they're more attractive architecturally, could we add vertical additions? How do we emphasize the history of the city through building design, murals, public art, the things that catch people's eye and make places special? Can we encourage affordable retail so that we don't lose the businesses that we value? How do we preserve existing businesses during redevelopment? And then, do we need a place where we can have more performance space? Right now, for example, at First Fridays, there's a parking area, we have bands and car shows and activities, can those be enhanced, or are there other examples of places we can do that? Next. Land use, heightened density, there was interest in not having building canyons, trying to avoid loading and other noises along adjacent residential areas, using step-down architecture along the periphery, and this is an example where we're suggesting that there's a stepping down, a tapering to the neighborhood. Preserving historic structures, because there are quite a few small, somewhat isolated, but nonetheless historic structures that remain in the downtown area. And how can we invest public funds strategically, underground utilities, make streetscape improvements, focusing on, can we provide public parking garages and new green space, and is there a way to help facilitate parcel consolidation through land banking? Now, the EDA has been working on that, and the Planning Commission also has been aware of their activities. Next. Open space, trying to have nodes where we can create and enhance those nodes, incorporating historic assets, you know, Big Chimneys Park's an important park, how, it's not, it's right outside the edge of the, of this area, but nonetheless, we need to connect to it and relate to it. Water fountains were mentioned as a focal point. Fairfax Street, again, mentioned, small pocket parks, connecting our parks with new development, more street trees and furniture, wider setbacks to allow better passage, council approved the additional setbacks for Broad and Washington Street, which I think was an important effort and was recently done. Next. Transportation, interest in sharing parking so we don't have towing wars, looking at municipal parking garages and possibly parking meters, electric car recharging stations, we know that's coming, and is there a way to provide some of that, encourage that with new development? Transit shuttle, is that something could be done, how could we afford it? Can we do that with our neighbors? The goal being to try to reduce automobile use. Providing more bicycle parking, bike share, bike lockers, this is the kind of area that would, I think, benefit from that kind of use. And on the pedestrian side, providing more connectivity, greater safety through bulb bouts at intersections where you reduce the distance pedestrians have to cross, providing better lighting in crosswalks, and then pathways through the commercial areas. Next. So, as we go forward, we'll be looking at additional presentations to the Planning Commission and City Council, going to boards and commissions, getting feedback, making edits based on those, there'll have to be a formal referral and, you know, advertising of this before it would be adopted by planning, or recommended by Planning Commission, adopted by council, and then we will look to implement projects that were identified in the plan once it is, has gone through this process. So, at this point, apologize for the length of this, but I don't, is that the last one, Cindy? I think it may be. The plan is lengthy, it's been done in-house, we do think that this truly is the heart of the city, it is the downtown, so it's the piece that I think we can, we can help solidify Falls Church's identity by working with what's here and enhancing it. Thank you.
Thank you for that very thorough presentation and report. I know from my own experience that reports like this are done in other jurisdictions and cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I would say that you've done a great job with your in-house capacities. Why don't we go ahead and get comments as well? I don't know whether we start with you, Ms. Rogers, or at the end, or how you'd like to do it.
Overall, one of the things I really like about this area plan is when you look back at all the other studies that were done, most of them involve some very large expensive project or something that would have to jumpstart, and this is a very scalable, doable type of plan, and we're talking about, you know, twenty to thirty years, but it allows for us to develop where we can, as we can, without having to put a twenty or thirty million-dollar investment somewhere in there, which is what a lot of those past plans basically had. So, for that reason, I think that this downtown plan is one of the best of all those, I've read most of them at one time or another, and this is probably, this really kind of brings it together and gives us something we can actually work towards. Other than that, I only have one real specific comment, and that is on page five-twenty, and it's just my preference would not to be to have this page in here on the Shirley Street extension. And my reason is, is because right now, that paper street is de facto being used as parkland, it's wooded right there along the edge, and Big Chimneys Park is a pretty small park as it is, and I just think, I'm not saying if the right development came along that we couldn't extend Shirley Street, but I really don't want it in this area plan, because I think that anyone looking to develop that bowling alley spot will immediately think, okay, I'm going to put this street in, and they'll see that as a de facto buffer for the park, and what I'd rather see is that paper street remain parkland and see more of a pedestrian walkway in there, and that's my preference, but I'm not saying that if developer came in and had a good reason for needing Shirley Street that we wouldn't put it in, but I think by putting it in the plan, it pretty much makes it de facto in anything we get from a developer, so I'd like to see it pulled out of here personally.
The reason I like this plan is it does take advantage of what we have and going with that and building around it, and looking for not the huge big thing, but being able to do it incrementally. Other thing that I really would encourage everybody to read the history of those plans, I mean, I just reread it today, and seriously, the same things we're talking about today were talked about thirty, forty years ago, and the height of buildings and all this kind of stuff, and it amazes me to, you know, considering some of the previous hassles we've had over the heights of buildings and everything, that's still around since that was introduced so many years ago, so take a good look at it, it's really very interesting.
Rob? No comment.
He's got nothing.
I had a quick question, and I should probably already know this, but how we pick the boundaries, I think it's pretty logical, but, you know, is there any value in including the park in the area or, you know, like the Park Towers Apartments, I mean, and they're not likely to change, but if they ever did change, it might be interesting for them to be part of the plan, or certainly like the Stratford, that seems to be an odd thing to not include in the area, just because I think there's a decent chance that that will redevelop, so I don't know if there's...
It's a good question, we have, we've left the boundaries alone, it isn't to say that the Planning Commission and Council couldn't change them to include things, we, I think it is important where we have a boundary edge like a Big Chimneys Park adjacent that we...
Consider what's over there.
We talk about how that's going to work, we can't ignore that we have neighboring properties, and so I think we have to be very cognizant of what's adjacent, and whether you want to formally change those lines or not, that would be something for council and Planning Commission to consider.
And also, the Stratford, and it's actually in Plan Area Six.
Yeah.
It's not outside of a planning area.
No, I knew that, I just, I think Planning Area Six is somewhat down the list of what we're going to get to, and I think that...
Your point is, you know, are these lines logical or should there be adjustments? And it's a fair question.
Yeah. And then, I liked, I think we did a little bit of this with the South Washington area where we tried to do these implementation plans, like things that we could actually do that aren't going to make all this come true, but would actually be more than just, hey, here's a plan on paper, so I'd love to, and I know most of the implementation plans take money, but I'd love to really think about that and try to say, well, okay, we do all this work, we have this plan, we like it, but can we actually put our money where our mouth is on, whether it's streetscaping or utility undergrounding or something that would encourage other stuff to happen?
Through CIP.
Yeah, through CIP, which I'm sure will be hard to do, but worth considering, and then along those lines, I think incentives, this area maybe isn't super applicable for this, but incentives to get lot consolidation, to do more comprehensive developments, I don't know what those incentives could be, either more density or something, I've always thought is something that, you know, there's not a lot we can do to get people to consolidate lots, and there's many, a project that you hear can't happen because there's one hole out in some lot somewhere, and if somehow we could create a incentive so everybody would benefit by consolidating lots, I think that would be great. And then my final thought is just, with Harris Teeter going forward, I think stuff will start happening in this area sooner than later, and so I think in some ways, if we want this plan to affect things, time might be of the essence to try to get it done, or else I think we'll start seeing other proposals come in that won't, you know, won't have the plan in mind because the plan won't exist yet, so that's all.
I think we're moving pretty quickly on this plan, Andy, and if you look at the last page of this proposal, there's an implementation action plan.
Yeah, no, I was looking at, I was saying, I'd love to actually say, hey, let's actually do some of this stuff and not just have it on a list.
Instead of just looking at it. Yeah, it might, it might be good to do short-term and midterm the way we did on the transportation plan. I agree with Melissa on the Shirley Street proposal, I don't know if we would take it out totally, but I do think that we should try to save it as parkland as opposed to encouraging it for development, so I'd like to discuss that a little bit further after this. Also, I'd like to, I know we have a design area and we have, we talked about having the area compatible with residential, residential areas, and there's not an awful lot of residential surrounding this area, but I do think we need to make sure that we do have a compatibility section in here, we have a compatibility section in several of the other area plans, and I think it would be good to move something in here, particularly because we're looking at the Falls Church, this isn't included in it, but it certainly is going to be impacted by it, and that's a special area, it has its own, I've forgotten what it's called, design.
Official design.
Yeah, official design.
Official design, yeah.
So, we want to make sure that everything works together, and I think compatibility section could be added without much trouble. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go ahead and get council comments, maybe starting from the other side with you, Dan, if that's okay? Dave, do you have any comments?
Thank you. Before I address that, I want to address a procedural item related to the rescheduling of this meeting. Last night, as a policy matter, I opposed the cancellation of the meeting, but recognized that maybe that was the best course. On the other hand, scheduling a meeting the next day raised FOIA questions, which I asked for a legal opinion on. We got the legal opinion twenty minutes before the proposed start of this meeting. That opinion was late in coming, and the procedures followed at City Hall were unacceptable in terms of making the decision as to when to reschedule this meeting. Now, the gist of the legal opinion was, based upon some analysis, it was probably okay to go forward, but the better approach would have been to reschedule when a proper three-day notice could have been given, and that no vote should be taken in this meeting. So, I just wanted to lay that out, I had serious questions about the way this whole thing evolved with regard to the cancellation and postponement of the meeting. Obviously, a lot of people would have been inconvenienced with, had this meeting been postponed again tonight, twenty minutes before the meeting, which is when we got the legal opinion, even though I'd asked for it twenty-four hours in advance, so let me just put that on the record. Now, with regard to the particular item in front of us, the small area plan, the one thing that I'm missing is a wow factor, it's got some components that I like, some that I don't like, but it doesn't have a coherence to it that really celebrates the history and culture of the city, and that definitely marks this out as a destination where people would want to come and spend their money from around the region. I just don't see that here. It's, again, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, some components I like, some I'm not so crazy about, but I'm disappointed in the lack of originality and the lack of a coherent view that would set us off as something dramatically different and attractive from what you can see all across the rest of Northern Virginia, the suburban sprawl, and especially Tyson's Corner and Marahfield, so that would be my basic view, and I would, I would like more work done on some out-of-the-box thinking. Thank you.
Sure. I'll tell you, if I could just also follow up on your first point, I think it was difficult to get the opinion actually just before this meeting started, but my understanding of the conclusion is that it was acceptable to have this meeting tonight, it was a work session, we're not taking formal action, is that correct, Mr. Shields?
That is correct, and we did speak with the FOIA Council today down in Richmond, they are, they're an advisory board that serves local governments when we have questions like this, and they did comment that the FOIA code does not address specifically the question of a postponement due to weather. They did think that we did all the right things, we posted it to all of our normal places, we sent out our emails to our listserv... We sent out our emails to our listserv. We posted it legally. We advertised it very thoroughly. And so their comment to us was that we had done all the right things for this meeting. But they did also say that the FOIA does not address it explicitly.
Mr. Merrif, I might. I don't think that's really a good summary, and I would hope that the legal opinion could be issued. The legal opinion was not nearly that positive. It said probably you could do it, but the better course would have been to advertise this meeting for three days hence and go through the normal advertising process.
All right, why don't we continue? Nader?
Just on that point, I don't want to weigh in, but perhaps that's, I'd suggested that our rules of procedure may need some tweaking and updating. This may be something that we might want to just tackle on, just so we have best practices. I think we did that with online blogs where we sort of added it as a matter of policy. So I would suggest that, if we can put that into a parking lot for future discussion. Just on these, on this plan, just six points I wanted to raise. Jim, thanks to you and your staff and Wyatt for doing these in-house at low cost. I think it's something that the council had asked for in its last work plan, and I think it's great that these are moving along. I did have six comments on this, and I'll just go through them very quickly. One is organization. I think this may still be a bit of a work in progress. I was looking back, for example, on the South Washington Street Plan, which I thought went very well, and there were subchapters within the chapters, and that seems to be missing here. An example of that would be, for example, what we mean by various densities. Another is one that Ruth alluded to, such as language regarding compatibility. There was a whole subsection on compatibility that's not in this plan. And that's, for example, Jim, if you want to take a look at it, in the South Washington Street Plan, it's chapter five dash thirteen. Two, I share some of the comments that two of the commissioners made regarding Shirley Street extended. I think my recollection of when that was proposed, it was sort of, we were looking at a blank slate, at some overall transportation plan. Lots has changed since that with, for example, Rushmark, the other two projects down the street. It may make sense that this is more of an actual pedestrian pathway. We just got done talking about pedestrian-oriented streets, and yet we're talking about adding a street that's supposed to be pedestrian-oriented but is really vehicular in nature to essentially create blocks, which was the original concept of this. So I sort of question that, given where we're at, and it may make sense that this is more of, you know, essentially an extension of the park with pedestrian walkway or a bike walkway rather than moving cars around the city. Four is along the lines that Vice Mayor Snyder alluded to, my comment was a little bit of more of the same. And specifically what I'll allude to is, I believe it's on chapter thirteen, page eleven, and it's sort of at the bottom. We keep talking about, you know, if we get more residential, then maybe the rest of the planning area will develop. So I know that this raises a huge policy issue, but I'll raise it again, is when do we say enough residential and we're going to be looking to have commercial development of a different nature? I'm not saying that it shouldn't happen within this area, but I think that we need to clearly specify what our priorities are in this type of document, or we are just going to get over and over the mixed-use, heavy residential with some first-floor retail. And that's sort of spelled out as much on page three-eleven. So I think that may be, at least I don't want to speak for Vice Mayor Snyder, but that's certainly how I interpreted some of what he's saying, and certainly I echo those. Five, I talked a little bit about the missing language about density and other things like that in the subchapters. And then finally, just as a matter of process, I think our normal rules require that things come before us again in work session before we take final adoption. So I would just ask that, you know, before we go on any, to any final adoption, we either have a joint work session again or the council have another looksee at it for more than what's scheduled for twenty minutes on a plan. But I think this is, I know I had a lot of comments there, but I think this is definitely what we're looking at. So, but I just think this needs a little bit more work.
Mary Beth?
I really like this plan. I felt myself smiling the whole time you were talking about it, Jim. It seemed like a place where you'd want to be, and I liked, I especially liked the pedestrian connections between Park and Broad near Dockwood Tavern. My question about that is, that will require a lot of work with the existing landowners and does that happen after this point or has that already happened to draw that into the plan? There's a...
That is something we'd have to work with the property owners. And I think providing flexibility so that these individual, unique businesses have the ability to expand. Right now, parking is designing the world here. Nobody can expand without providing that extra space. We're dealing with, many of these properties are short of what the code may require. Mr. Rankin's comment about, you know, there's fragmentation. So we will need to work with him. And I think the manager has asked Rick Goff, and he's already begun doing some discussions with some of those groups in that area in terms of sharing parking so that we could provide more flexibility. Some of you may be familiar with the area down in Georgetown where, it's called Katie's Alley, which is an area that, you know, was an older commercial area with a kind of nasty alley in the back that's been redone, reworked into a shopping area. The same geography, the same alley, but now a very attractive destination. So one of the questions is, how do you create those kind of destination places with the fabric you've got and filling in the pieces? And that, I think, is what we're, there will need to be additional work done, I think, with the business owners in that area in terms of how would you realize the, what's implied in this plan to make that a special area? That will take more work.
Right, like incentivizing that coherence so that it looks like a park.
And possibly coming up with more, you know, additional fine-grained design ideas about, well, how do you convert that alleyway behind the CVS where the dumpsters are into a place that can accommodate some amount of vehicular traffic at low speeds, but also safe pedestrian passage to outdoor cafes and the backs of business and other businesses that might have additional entrances there. So it will take more work. This is providing a broad outline. That may well be one of the recommendations that has to come out of this additional design work, to how do you create the special place in this area that has a number of attractive local destination businesses? And how do we add to that so that it becomes more of a destination location, as Vice Mayor Snyder suggested?
I think that's all.
Karen?
Well, I agree with everything that everybody else has said, and I guess my, I mean, it's a really fat plan. It has a lot of details. It's hard to absorb all at once. I guess one question I have, and it does link a little bit to what Mr. Snyder said earlier, is I wish this plan had a vision statement, the way the transportation plan does, and that it had a vision statement that gave you that wow. I don't, you know, we don't, there's a little preamble before the purpose and that long list, but I'd still like something that created more of a vision. And then my only other question is about the timing on this. At one point, somebody had mentioned you wanted to have this approved by March.
March of May.
In the staff report, we indicate a preference for March. Yeah, we are trying to move these along so that we can finish, we can do the rest of the ones in the city. So we're trying to have a sense of urgency. That's not to say that we need to have them done before they're ready to be done. And I think when I initially came on board, we were trying to strive for one of these every six months, which we thought was the fastest they could be done. And we're probably more about, I've been here three years in February, we're probably more at about two and a half, you know, one per year maybe. But that's, you know, that's a lot faster than some plans. Some plans are done, take many years and cost lots of money. So we're a lot speedier than some places. But over time, we want to finish the rest of the plans, these areas in the city, and so we're trying to, try to push ourselves, not to say that we want to be done before it's time to be done.
I guess my only comment is that I think I've heard enough comments tonight that I'm not sure March works, particularly if we're going to have a second joint work session. But somebody who's looking more carefully at the calendar can answer that.
I'd love to get it done, but within this fiscal year, if at all possible. So that's, that's before July one.
Got a few comments, questions. I saw one of the charts that showed an FAR currently, I think about point five, and then you'd shown as an example, two-point-five. Is that essentially what you're proposing the FAR to be ultimately?
Well, two-point, one of the reasons we mentioned two-point-five is Urban Land Institute's done a study nationally of what constitute, you know, successful places, and that's about the minimum to have a successful urban, suburban area. And so we've suggested that as a threshold we're trying to hit. Individual sites might be higher or lower, but you need at least that to be able to afford structured parking and to get something that feels like a connected pedestrian area. We do have, I think, in the core commercial area, which we're showing is a change on the future land use plan so that it would be focused on office, hotel, and retail, an ability to go higher and taller because of the zoning there. So those areas might be higher than that. It might be an average. But we're trying to make people understand that the present, the present density is not working for us, working against us, doesn't create good places that are walkable, doesn't let you collect parking in structures, and it doesn't promote walking and pedestrian urban areas. So a lot of it comes out of the Urban Land Institute, some of their writings, which we've shared earlier with the planning commission and others, has, you know, a good national kind of touch point.
Have you done any analysis of the additional tax revenue that, for example, the higher density would generate for the city?
Yes, we have done some work on that, and maybe that'd be a, I mean, one of the things you find is that if, for example, presently you have very low densities, if we could even get to a one-oh FAR across the city, now we're at about, you know, it's point three, point five in some places, point two in others, the buildings aren't worth what the land is. Typically, the buildings ought to be worth three or four times what the land is. If that were the case, the land would be worth at least double what it is now. So, for example, the old Sears site in Clarendon, which used to be parking lots and the Northern Virginia's largest garage, is now, a few years ago, was worth twenty million dollars an acre. By contrast, Eden Center's worth about four million dollars an acre. There's a five-fold difference in terms of what one place is worth versus another. They both were old shopping centers with a lot of surface parking, well-located, but not on anybody's list of the greatest place to be. So through good planning, I think ultimately we can, and good marketing, and because we have a great location, we can move toward that over time and have our commercial areas become places that really provide a lot of tax support so that we can have new schools and improve our residential areas. It's not development for its own sake, it's to build a better community. And so using these areas strategically and developing them well, we should be able to change the tax base over time. It does take time, though. So it's got to get built, got to come online, and that tax bill's got to go out, so.
I would encourage you, next time you see us, to share some of the data with us. In other words, what are the numbers? What is the return for higher FAR than is there now? And what are some different possibilities out of two-FAR, three-FAR, whatever the numbers might be? Couple other questions for you. You mentioned highest density in the city. Is that based on existing zoning? Are you proposing any changes in zoning to allow higher buildings?
Well, the B-two zone, which is the zone in the city that has the greatest height, this area is zoned for that. And so past councils have zoned the area as well to provide the flexibility for high-density development within this area of the city. And you have building heights which allow, there aren't FAR limits at this point. It's based on how the project is evaluated in terms of setback and design. So we have a lot of flexibility if we can get the marketplace to view Falls Church as a place that they want to bring their business, their office building, their retail. The B-two zone is very flexible, and it also, we have the ability, I think, to adapt it for, with these opportunity areas. We can probably write special rules for certain areas of the city using that zone, but linking it to land use plan.
Okay. I would also encourage you to maximize or attempt to maximize shared parking. So, for example, an office building would let their garage be open for fee in the evenings for residents or people who want to go to restaurants and the like. It's done in other communities. It's a very efficient way to use parking for an office or vice versa in off-times. Also maximizing on-street parking. I know we have a lot of on-street parking, but I think there are ways to squeeze extra spaces out of, maybe meters are appropriate in certain areas to encourage turnover and the like. But I think we've got to do all we can to get our on-street parking working as well as it can. The, you mentioned better bicycle and street connections or pedestrian connections. Is there anything specific you have in mind, wider sidewalk widths? Or what particularly were you proposing with that regard?
Well, in the core entertainment area, we're looking to try to make improvements along Park Avenue and Maple Avenue, all of which have sidewalks, but they're nothing to write home about. And the areas in the middle of the blocks where you can, as a pedestrian, go through, but mainly it's asphalt and parking, there aren't clear pedestrian paths. Redesigning those so that there are pedestrian connections within those mid-blocks, those can be very attractive places for pedestrians once they park their car or they're in the vicinity or if they live in the neighborhood, for people to stroll, go to restaurants, go to interesting shops. Some of the shops, for example, the frontage along Broad Street have rear entrances where Doodle Hopper and the, some of the shops that face Broad have rear entrances. It could be possible, for example, for additional floors to be put on those buildings and have additional activity from the rear of the property. So trying to turn these parking lots into places that also are compatible and designed for pedestrians.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we wrap up and see if there are any additional comments from planning commission and the council as well? Excuse me. Melissa, do you want to say?
Phil. Or Phil?
It doesn't matter. Whoever wants to speak first, why don't we go?
I was just going to comment on Mr. Snyder's comments about there not being this wow factor. And I think part of it is in the past, especially at Street Works is one of them, there were these big wow projects in there. But that's not, what we heard from the community is that they like a lot of the things that are here. And for us to do some big project like Mosaic would mean we'd have to take down some of the stuff that people like. And so I think what we tried to do with this plan is to allow for redevelopment, allow for new, to allow for the core commercial area to become bigger, to get more office and commercial in there without losing some of the stuff that people really like. And they want Brown's Hardware to stay, and they want the Doodle Hopper's building to stay. So we weren't looking to really transform this area. We wanted to keep what people liked and get more of that. And also in the South Washington Street area plan, we did put a placeholder in there, an area where we thought we could do something like the Mosaic. That would be, it's where the radio tower shopping center is and shopping center behind it, because those were things where we didn't have people say, I need this radio tower shopping center to be here forever. So we felt that that was actually a better location. It doesn't take out things that people want, plus it could complement the Falls Church and Fairfax. So it was a way, so that's kind of how we got there, where we kind of, you know, if you go back and look at those old plans, a lot of them did have these wow kind of, you know, city center kind of things to them, but that's not what we got from the community. We've had two big community meetings on this with a really good turnout, and the first one especially. And that's not what we got from people. They didn't want what they want, they have what we have, but have it be better.
This is a little analogous to Clarendon where there were a lot of plans to redevelop it and bypasses around it over the years. You have a combination there of rehabilitation, individual and chain businesses, and it's become the activity center in the heart of Arlington. And there are lots of plans to tear it down or redevelop it or go around it. So there are some examples, that's one, where there have been a combination of old buildings and independent businesses, new buildings, filling in parking lots.
Just to follow on that thought, I would love for us to talk about this a little longer and see if we could arrive at a process that would have us replicate what happened in that area that you just mentioned, because my notion had always been that the city center, the heart of the city, would be a little more intensively developed than what parts of this plan seemed to call. than what parts of this plan seemed to call for. And I agree with Ms. Oliver. I think that it would be good to talk about this through the first half of the year, and the, the title of it, downtown, it seems a little down in terms of height and seems a little town, and instead of city, just for my money. It's what Mr. Snyder calls a lack of a wow factor, and I agree with that a little bit, too. I mean, I think we want to have preservation of the things that people like, but we also want to have, as Mr. Tarter said, FARs and tax revenues that help us support all the other things that we want here in town.
Additional comments?
Just, again, this is going back to the comment that I made earlier about, you know, these are supposed to be visionary documents, but here's another example of what I, you know, find a little bit troubling about, about how this is phrased, and this is on page 311. Residential development in this area has the potential to generate momentum for office development in the CCA and retail in the CEA. And again, while that may be true, I just think in a document like this, if I were reading this as a developer, somebody looking to come to the city, I would take that as a message meaning, bring on the development that's residential before anything else. That's how I would potentially interpret that. I just think that as a community, we need to be more visionary, and if we have priorities of what we want to see first, we should talk about that and lay that out. I just think that with a statement like that, that can be read as something neutral, but it could also mean an invitation that we're actually looking for residential development before we do the office, et cetera. And that may be a circumstance of the economy, et cetera, but I think it's also important for us to lay out the priorities in developing a wider tax base.
One thing I would do is point the, the council and the commission to pages 414 and 416. 414 says the present future land use plan for the area, which has a very large area of mixed use, which implies that residential could happen along with other uses in a very broad area. And one of the things this plan does is try to show places where we would prefer mostly commercial, office, and retail. If you look at page 416, you'll see the contrast where the mixed use has been reduced substantially, and we have a concentration of, of commercial area that's well-defined, and then a concentration of commercial area that's defined. So, trying to say that we'd like to see a concentration of office uses in, and commercial areas in one area where we could have higher densities and greater height, that's shown in the blue on 416, and an area where we'd like to encourage retail and entertainment, that's shown in the red with the yellow line around it. And then, and then the mixed use area is, is reduced down in size. The idea there is that some areas, offices like to be near offices, and you'll notice when you look at areas that have a lot of office development, they tend to cluster in one place, and you're probably gonna be more successful if you try to focus that use in, in a geographic area. And retail likes to be with retail, and so, we're trying to provide that direction within this. Now, this may not be enough, but I did want to point out that was one of the specific major land use plan proposals that's part of this plan, may not be highlighted enough, but we're looking to make that change.
Jim, just to be clear, I, my comment didn't go to that issue of where the location is, but it's one of sort of laying out preferences and timing. So, I think we can still keep some of the land use pieces, but I think it's important to say the city is looking to expand its tax base. We are looking to have more commercial, retail, and, and sort of getting away from this language of, we need more residential in order to get the commercial corridor built. So, I'm not disagreeing with, you know, having the commercial corridor and having some residential. All I'm suggesting is perhaps stepping back and saying, "We must have more residential in order to have the commercial pieces to happen," which is how I'm reading this.
Certainly in terms of, certainly in terms of laying out the vision piece and working with economic development, we can strengthen the commercial aspect and what's messaged here in terms of the idea of attracting unique retail to this area and creating a place that people want to come to, and also the idea of creating an office district, if you will. So, I think those are things that we can emphasize perhaps much more in this plan to give it more presence in the marketplace and, and a better understanding of what the intention behind the land use proposals are. So, appreciate those comments.
Additional comments? Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate that. Why don't we move on to the next item?
We're having a sidebar conversation just about the process from here, whether this, whether the council has concurrence that we should gather more public input and board and commission comment on this plan, and then bring it back to you in March, or whether the council wants a more, more formal referral. So, this is essentially the same procedural question as with the last one.
Thoughts from folks on council, or Planning Commission for that matter? Clearly, it sounds like we need some more council time with this. Now, the context of how that might occur, I don't know. I'm certainly open to, we're open to your recommendations, but I think as a council, we'd like to, to look at this in more depth, maybe have another work session on this at a later point. So, thoughts on how that might occur procedurally? I'm not sure the answer to that.
Okay. And one of the things we're hoping for is if we can get more comments from other boards and commissions, that may help inform council about, you know, other aspects that need to be strengthened or changed in the plan or added to the plan. We have Parks and Recreation, we have other groups, you know, who may want to weigh in on this, and we haven't really been before them, so.
Okay, so, we will, we'll just talk about the schedule then, and update the council schedule in terms of when this will come back to council.
Okay, next item?
The next item is a discussion of the planning process for the boundary adjustment areas of the city. We have a, we have a quick discussion, Mr. Novak, of, of this item, and we do, just for the council's schedule or its meeting agenda, we are behind schedule at this point by about an hour. And the, so I will, I will just keep a discussion of the boundary adjustment area planning very brief.
Let's keep this brief and high level, because I don't think we're really ready to get into the substance of it.
Okay. The, the key thing that we want to communicate tonight is the need for bringing, I think, key stakeholders together in a small group to lay out a roadmap by which all the big decisions will be made for the future land use planning for the, for the boundary adjustment areas. The council has already appointed two members to a steering committee or a, a small planning group that would work with the school board to develop that roadmap. And again, that would be a group just to, to talk about process. What are the milestones? What's the schedule? What's the best way forward to lay out a, a planning process for this part of the city that's now just being brought into the city? We do need a Planning Commission member. There's also, my recommendation to both the city council, but in my discussions with the superintendent, is that I think this small steering group would benefit also from the Economic Development Authority, having a representative on this group. That's a council decision and a school board decision, but I think that would help oxygenate the, the discussions, not just from a school planning perspective, but also from an economic development perspective. And those are really sort of the two things that need to proceed in this planning process.
Okay, thank you very much. Are we ready to go ahead with the Kensington proposal, then?
Just on that, I still think that we need to have a meeting of the minds as far as a resolution. I think Dan and I both talked about it, so before this group, however it's comprised, gets too far ahead, I sort of bit my tongue and said, "Okay, yeah, great that we've got two council members appointed to it, but I still don't know exactly what they're gonna be doing, because there's sort of the school resolution that's sort of vague, and we don't have one of our own or a joint one." So, I think sort of a term of reference or a term of work, just so everybody's clear on what the group is gonna be doing, that it's not an options group, but it's a brainstorming and process discussion that they're supposed to have, just so there's no misunderstandings, I think is really important. And I just want to make sure that we have, if, I'm supportive of having an EDA rep on that, just for the record. And then, two, I don't know if we want to have more discussion to make sure that we have enough Planning Commissioner reps there as well.
Wyatt, did we, maybe you could prepare a draft resolution for our next meeting for discussion purposes?
Okay. Now, would the council like that on the agenda for next Monday night? Monday night is a relatively light agenda, and we could prepare a resolution, circulate it, put it as very much a draft when it, when the agenda's posted on, which will be tomorrow, then continue to work on it, to refine it, and have it potentially for council action on Monday night.
Agreement on that? Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, please. Planning Commission would like to make a comment on that and...
Absolutely.
Well, so I just, and I defer to, to Jim a little bit on the schedule. You know, we were scheduled to take this up with the small area plan, and as we've just seen, these small area plans have a lot of moving pieces. There's a certain amount of community input. And the small area plans, and I think we just saw this highlighted in our discussion of, of the downtown, sort of work in conjunction with these other small area plans. And I think this site, partly because of its proximity to the metro, partly because of its size, really would lend itself to a density that I, I don't think we are used to in the city. And I think it supplants some other development that we may or may not be prepared for. So, I'm, I'm kind of interested and don't really understand what the, the school board's resolution was, was about. I don't, and maybe it's about process, and, and maybe I'm sort of weak on that sort of a thing. So, we were sort of interested, I think, when we discussed it as a Planning Commission, that there would be such a light participation on the Planning Commission, particularly because we are about to enter into the small area plan part of it. So, maybe you could expand on your understanding if someone has some greater understanding, because I, I, I for one didn't really get that.
I think the group, to my understanding, this steering committee, if you will, is really gonna focus on high-level process, procedure, and timing, and not, there may be other groups that are subsequently appointed or constituted that'll get into more details, particular aspects of the process. But I think this is just really a kind of a high-level group to really start things rolling, and to discuss procedure and process and the like, and how things are gonna proceed. So, that's my understanding of the group.
May I?
Yes, please.
This is gonna be one of the most important areas and one of the most important opportunities we'll ever see in the city of Falls Church with this acquisition of land. And the planning portion of it is going to be extremely important, and I do feel like numbers count. And I don't think the Planning Commission was, is at all happy with just one member.
Let me, let me, let, let me try to go back and try to clarify things. There's no doubt that as this project goes forward, the Planning Commission will play a critical role in the planning-related issues. This group does not in any way substitute for that. Rather, this group is literally a group to talk about process and to talk about what expertise will be needed going forward. And then, there will be particular boards and commissions in the city that will play absolutely large roles as they should play in different areas of their expertise, including the Planning Commission. So, I think that's the way to look at this. This is purely to get going on the process. The schools were concerned that they saw the materials tonight, and they were concerned that it looked like we were getting ahead of them. We don't want to get ahead of anybody. We want to move forward together. So, I wouldn't make too much of this group, except that it's gotta get going, and we gotta get some process in place. So, indeed, the Planning Commission can play exactly the kind of role you're talking about as we go down the road and, and mature this, this project. So, the fact that there's one person on this smaller group doesn't mean anything, except the Planning Commission representative will be there to explain, "Okay, at what points in the process should the Planning Commission play what role?" That's all. And then, the Planning Commission as a whole will play that role. It's literally a process issue, and I think we need to move forward. We've started to lose time already. So, that's all that this is intended to be.
I disagree. I really do.
Okay, any additional comments?
No.
Well, if it's a process question, it's, it's simple. It's, it doesn't have any zoning right now. So, I, I mean, the first issue is, why wouldn't you small-area plan it to try to figure out what you would zone, what the density would be?
This is a conversation that needs to be held with the schools, with the city, with the Planning Commission, and it should be held. The purpose of this small group is to exactly orchestrate and choreograph exactly the kind of thing you're talking about. How we work the area plans in, how we work the economics in, how we work the concerns of the schools and the larger community in. So, it's exactly, literally, this is purely a process effort at this point to try to get things moving, to lay out, lay out a framework for moving forward, and the Planning Commission will have a key vote in this smaller group.
Well, Dave, what kind of votes are they gonna be taking? I mean, I, I thought it sounded as though there was gonna not be any real decisions made, except how the process was gonna be made.
Right, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. And I would assume it would be by consensus.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay, Wyatt, why don't you call the next matter?
We're joined by Mr. Ed Novak and Mr. Harley Cook, who are gonna present to the council tonight an update on the project called the Kensington, an assisted-living project with retail on the first floor. The council has been briefed on this project at one time in the past, and the Economic Development Committee's been briefed on this in the past. And so, tonight is, is an update on changes with respect and response to earlier comments. We do want to hear council's input on this, so obviously, we have new council members who have, who have not seen this project in a formal way, and so, we want to get that input. We'd also like to just very briefly provide some, some staff input. Lauren Bruce is the planning staff lead for this project, and we have a staff report with initial commentary on it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions about that. Mr. Novak?
Is this working?
It is.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I know you're running behind, so I'll try and be brief. Just to, for the benefit of the new council members, congratulations, welcome aboard, and I'll just do a quick review of the project. As Wyatt said, it's an assisted-living project licensed in the state of Virginia, five-story building, 88 assisted-living units. That would house approximately 105 to 110 residents. This is all on the Burger King site, which is approximately a three-quarter of an acre site. The parking would be underneath the building, not underground, but underneath the building behind the facade of the retail and the side. So, no, no parking would be visible from Broad Street or Lee Street. All the vehicular, vehicular entrance would be on Lee Street. So, we're removing all curb cuts on Broad Street, continuing the streetscape, and, and this is the Hilton Garden Inn right next to us that's under construction. At our previous work session in October, we presented some architectural plans and elevations that incorporated several recommendations from Jim Snyder and his staff, increased use of brick, roof elements were, were changed a little bit. We increased the building setback from Broad Street to conform to the new 20-foot standard, made a few other changes. We have not really made any changes since that October meeting, inasmuch as the council and Planning Commission seem to be relatively satisfied with the direction of the architecture at that time, that is, the exterior architecture. So, what I'm gonna do is focus on, you know, about three or four issues and questions that were raised at the October meeting. First one, what is the economic impact of the project, and is it the highest and best use of the site? I believe that the answer to these are that the economic impact is very significantly positive, and yes, this is the highest and best use of the site. The one issue that had occurred fairly early in the process was the only other assisted-living project in the city of Falls Church is the Sunrise Project. Due to the manner in which that property is assessed, it has resulted in a fairly low assessment for the property. We have addressed that by proposing a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes, that would supplant the property tax assessment that is effectively equivalent to, I mean, in the case of Sunrise, their assessment is $5 million. In the case of our project, the pilot is based upon an assessment of $18 million, which is essentially what the underlying land and construction costs are for the project. So, that would, we initially had proposed $175,000 a year for a period of 12 years. Since then, we've met with Wyatt and staff, and we have revised our proposal to $235,000. Since then, we've met with Wyatt and staff and we have revised our proposal to $235,000 per year. There are some escalations in that for a period of 30 years, but with a provision that the city could terminate at any time after 15 years if it so chose to do so. So, and with the new pilot, we've estimated that the gross taxes to the city, including, and the pilot's only for property tax. So we still pay personal property tax, B-pole, sales and meals tax on the retail, that the total will be approximately $325,000 a year for the project in terms of gross taxes. And that, in terms of the city metric, works out to $417,000 per acre. You know, I certainly believe that this places this project as the highest and best use of the site. As you know, I've developed the Byron and the Broadway and I'm involved in Mad Fox. And the level of development here, interestingly, when Jim referred to 2.5 FAR, I did a quick calculation, we're at 2.35 FAR for this site. And that includes all of our parking, that does not include the parking counting against that FAR. That includes the underbuilding parking separately. So it's 80,000 square feet over a 34,000 square foot site. In addition, you know, with our $417,000 an acre in terms of gross tax revenues, there's zero chance, unlike the other assisted, the other mixed-use projects, there's zero chance that we're going to misestimate how many children are going to end up in the schools. We're pretty confident of that one. The second comment, or the second concern that was raised in October was, is the retail component of the project attractive and will it contribute to a more vibrant, pedestrian-friendly, and architecturally attractive Broad Street? We certainly think so. We've been consulting at length with StreetSense. They're, you know, nationally recognized experts in planning and designing of some of the most attractive retail projects in the country. I've sent you all a copy of their executive summary of their recommendations, which we've attempted to implement. With respect to the eastern corner of the property, this area, this is our highly visible corner and it lends itself to outdoor seating. We're proposing a high-quality cafe, bakery, wine bar type of space there of about 1,900 square feet with 600 to 700 square feet of outdoor seating area. In essence, that, you know, that serves as the cornerstone, both architecturally and from an activity standpoint for the project. With respect to the western corner, or the western half of the property, we, StreetSense initially suggested to us that if we could afford to do it, providing that space for a cultural or civic activity or group would, in their opinion, be very valuable. That it would help create a new sense of pedestrian activity to that area. It would complement the cafe and the wine bar. And we agreed, I mean, it is a significant financial commitment on our part because they obviously are not going to be paying rent, but, and we feel that we can integrate that well into the assisted living project itself. That said, there were concerns that were raised and, you know, we are, I'd like to put it out, that we are open to discussing alternative uses of that space, but we believe that the, we are really following the StreetSense recommendation and would like to hear more from the city council and planning commission on that. The next question that seemed to have been raised, you know, at our October meeting was, you know, is assisted living an appropriate use for this location along Broad Street? Again, we absolutely believe so. Although I don't live in the city myself, I've been here for 13 or 14 years since the Broadway. And, you know, I think I'm one of the biggest marketers of Falls Church as being a friendly, open, very inclusive community. And that says a lot for the city. As we all know, seniors, particularly those aged 80 and up, are the fastest-growing segment of the population. Unfortunately, as their life expectancies have increased dramatically over the last several decades, the propensity for seniors to need assistance, the instances of Parkinson's disease and Alzheimer's disease and just general physical frailty has not decreased that much. So geometrically, the growth in the number of seniors, 80 and up, that need some level of assistance, you know, has grown significantly and will be continuing to grow for the coming decades. But more importantly, the Kensington is not just going to be serving the seniors themselves. They're really serving as well the adult children and families who have elderly parents. And I think it, you know, I think it cannot be overstated, the psychological benefit of being able to have mom or dad or grandma or grandpa in a attractive community that still feels as though it's part of the larger community, it's part of an intergenerational community that welcomes the seniors to the community. So, you know, I do want to put this in perspective. This is a three-quarter of an acre site. It's an infill lot for all intents and purposes now. We're not trying to turn Broad Street into a retirement community, but we do think that this is a very complimentary use for all the other mixed-use development, Hilton Garden Inn next door, some commercial development that exists in the area. So we do think it's an appropriate location. Environmentally, there were questions raised. We have committed fully to certifying the project as a LEED Silver Certified project and we intend to implement, you know, as much as we can in terms of environmental quality standards. Last item, affordable housing. We have met with staff and discussed the challenges in the case of assisted living of separating the service component from the housing component. Over 80% of what residents pay in their monthly fee is going to the services. A relatively small portion is actually going to the rent, to the building. That's just the nature of assisted living. What we have proposed to do is to provide an internal pricing that essentially creates about a $1,300 per month subsidy for a certain number of our units, our beds. And, you know, we are doing that voluntarily as part of our pricing strategy, that subsidy. So that's really all. My formal presentation includes, I wanted to leave some time for questions and answers.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Why don't you maybe go ahead and have a seat and we'll go around the room with comments, questions, and address as need be. Do we have a staff report now or do you offer any comments? Or is that something that you're not prepared to-
Mr. Mayor, we have a summary, kind of an executive summary, that kind of fulfills the role of the staff report that outlines some possible issues that need to be discussed as you continue this project to look at it. So you should have that in your packet. Just off the top of my head, I think there are some outstanding issues that probably need to be looked at a little more carefully as the negotiations continue. One of the questions is whether or not the 20-foot setback, if you go to the edge of the building, you've got the 20 feet. But as you'll notice in the ground-floor concept, you're going up a flight of stairs and then to a patio where people are sitting outdoors. Now, that's very attractive, that's good. But as you've noticed in the Byron, that's not really a good use of the streetscape. In other words, combine that with the trees and you have a pretty narrow sidewalk, so.
The clear width there, if you could-
Do you know that, Ed, from the edge of the-
Yes. The building is set back in this area 25 feet.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 27 feet. So the clear sidewalk is, I believe, about 17 feet. And then there's about 10 feet of that outdoor seating area. So it does come somewhat into the 20-foot setback.
Right.
But again, you know, our thinking on that, and certainly, you know, we can look at narrowing the outdoor seating area, but our thinking on that too is that Hilton Garden Inn is employing streetscape planters that are flush to the sidewalk. That compared to the raised brick paver sidewalk or brick-curved planters, you know, allows for, you know, much more easy movement. I mean, you can ride a, you know, push a baby stroller across the edge of them and you're not going to trip and fall. Frankly, you know, we think, you know, from looking at Bethesda and other places that this is more than ample in terms of getting people by and still having 17 feet before our outdoor seating. But if you want us to push it back a little bit, we can certainly do that.
The other issues, Mr. Mayor, are, some of them come to mind or that are in your executive summary, are the tax revenue, the undergrounding of the utilities, the amount of siding on the backside of the building. It's not really matching the front of the building. The front of the building is very attractive with three different colored bricks. The back of the building does not do that. They did, at our suggestion, at least put the four corners as brick, which was not in the original concept. The reduction in parking of 37% is an issue that probably needs to be looked at. And there's other issues. So those are just some of the main ones that are off the top of my head.
Okay, great. So why don't we get comments from the planning commission? Where would you like to start, Ms. Rogers? Any, and you want to speak first, Melissa?
Yeah, I think, I think this project has come a long way since I first saw it. I saw it when it was presented to the AAB and that was months and months ago. And at that point, there was a lot more siding. So this is much more attractive and it's really great to see the brick wrap some of those quarters. And in fact, that was why I commented at the time that there needed to be a little bit more brick. So I'm glad to see that. I have to say, when I first opened the staff report and I saw 19 outstanding issues, I was a little bit concerned that this project wasn't ready. But as I was looking through them, it looks like some of these have been taken care of the pilot. I think 17 feet with outdoor seating is fine because part of the reason we want it 20 feet is we want it outdoor seating. So basically, we got outdoor seating even if it's raised a little bit. But that was part of what we were looking for. I think my main concerns right now is, do we have any stormwater technology in the project at this point? There's, it says here that it does not show any. It doesn't show space for trash or recycling. It just seems like the environmental issues haven't really been dealt with. And my other thing is the undergrounding issue. Why aren't we getting everything underground? Those are my two big comments at this point.
Because some people might be duped. I'm quite pleased with the changes in the exterior of the architecture of the building. I think that where the siding is, it's towards other buildings and particularly towards one side with the hotel and then the other part would be facing park. But there's still things going on at park too. So I think those changes have been very, very good. And as far as usage and everything, I still like the idea because you don't have very much commercial space in here at all. So, you know, the use of it as a community type of thing right in that area. I know it's not in the cultural and arts district, but certainly it would come as a very nice addition to that area along that street.
The, as an aside, I was fascinated by the objection to the art gallery, which seemed like a noble and gracious and great use of the space. I thought it sounded good and didn't understand the objections from last time. So thank you very much for that. My question is about the parking. I thought it was a justification for the reduction in parking. It seems like I understood it and it was correctly parked. So I didn't know, maybe you can, I mean, I'm sure other people will talk about the parking, but it seemed to me that that was sort of in line with where this building would be based on the residents and their cars and the visitors, et cetera. So I sort of understood that and was curious why that was still an outstanding issue.
All right. This is probably just me, and it's probably way too late for this, but to me, sitting outside on Broad Street sounds miserable whereas sitting on Lee Street sounds pleasant. So I don't know if that idea ever comes up to put the outdoor seating on the side. But that said, having it raised up a little bit actually might be nice since you're not quite eating right next to the cars whizzing by. Yeah. I never eat outside of Four Piece, is that weird? Obviously, the pilot, I think, goes a long way towards the highest and best use, although I'm curi-, I would be curious how it compares to the projected numbers of the Harris Teeter and the Turner Hill Reserve projects versus the older ones. Just curious about that. And then I'd also, again, this is sort of pie in the sky stuff, but it's always unfortunate to me that the blocks get so split up. So you get that skinny little hotel that kind of like a cancer wraps around all these lots. And then this is going to tie up just a corner of that block and there'll be the back corner that will have limited potential as a result of this, I would think. So when I look at highest and best use, I kind of think of the whole more bigger picture thing, which I know is not necessarily within everyone's control. But, and then my only comment about parking is if it's like underneath the Flower Building where you're slamming into poles every two seconds, that's going to be unfortunate.
Just two things. One, I'd like to hear the thoughts of the new councilors. And two, I think the staff report gives us a good roadmap for referring this out to boards and commissions and having them work details, particularly, I agree with Rob on parking. I think you've got answers for the questions, but our experience at Sunrise, the residents, of course, don't have to have parking, but guests of the residents do. And there, I think the church serves as an overflow parking lot. Just want to make sure that, you know, if we're creating a use here that we hope will bring people into the city to visit grandma, grandpa, or mom or dad, that there is a place for them especially to park and that there's a place for staff to park too. I mean, you must have some data about how many are going to use public transit and how many aren't, because some presumably are going to be working at off-hours, you know, night shift, that sort of thing. Anyway, working that issue would be of interest. But the staff report, I think, identifies the things that need to be discussed and I'd certainly be ready to put this on the council's schedule to consider for first reading.
Karen?
My only question at this time is making sure I understand if we refer to the planning commission, it has to come back in 60 days. Does that apply here as well?
Let me get back with you on that, I don't know the answer, right off the top of my head.
I guess, because my only question is that, given the list of items on the staff report and some of the other questions raised, I'm not sure that we would be at a point of final decision in 60 days.
All right, Beth?
My question goes to the parking also because I work in the Flower Building and I've hit my car three times on those. There's no, and I couldn't tell from looking at this, if there's an in and an out in the parking lot or if there's just one in and out, because that makes a big difference for using that parking lot or if there's a circular, if you'll be able to go around in a circle on that parking lot. I do think assisted living can be on Broad Street. There's a spot in Arlington on Wilson Boulevard where there are lots of apartments and other uses and there is an assisted living right in the middle there and it fits in just fine. It looks great and is part of the community, I think that's a good thing.
Nader?
Couple of comments. One, I've had a concern about the use, I still do. I'd like to hear from staff about what the best and highest use is. I share Andy's comments. I mean, frankly, when I heard about this project coming forward, we'd heard that no way, no how was Burger King going to sell the site to the hotel. Just wasn't going to happen, absolutely not. Everybody was pushing to have some land consolidation so the hotel could fit better. Couldn't be done, Burger King wasn't interested in selling, and here we have this project. So if we're talking about the larger area and figuring out how this may or may not fit, I think we need to look at best and highest use, not just for this parcel, but the surrounding parcels and whether there can be consolidation that are, that can happen. The last thing I want to see is we say, well, for this small site, this is the only thing that can happen. And guess what? We've now taken two other sites off the table because consolidation can't happen for the next hundred and some years. next hundred and some years. So I've asked for that information before. Again, I remain concerned about the particular use, how it breaks up the parcels adjacent to it. Two, and again, that's a whole separate issue and, you know, I'm making a big assumption that we even get past that bar before we begin to even talk about the pilot, but assuming that we can get through the use issues, which have a huge question mark by it. So I don't want my comments to be misconstrued because the use is the key for me. And then coming back to the pilot, I still think the pilot's too low and we haven't talked about any escalator clauses for the pilot and the length of the pilot, which should carry for the length and life of the building. And there should be an escalator that's built into it to increase here and based on some factor. Three, the retail strategy, I still frankly don't get it. You know, we've had other projects that have more of a strong anchor and we've basically said either you have to have a retail component, like grocery store and lease in hand before you get permits, or you have to have an office ready to go before you get certain permits. And here, we're just sort of, and I'll quote a Bruce Springsteen song for those of you who know I love Springsteen, but "Land of Hopes and Dreams." You know, this is sort of, here's the strategy, we hope it works out, but don't ask for a lease, this and that. I'd like to, before we even consider it, have a sense of what it is we're looking at. Coffee shop may work, but I'd like to see stronger commitments of the type of usage that we're looking at for the spaces. That's all I had.
Dave?
Thank you. My initial reaction was somewhat skeptical of the use, but the more I've worked with this project, the more that I've looked at the numbers, I've looked at what you've done architecturally, I'd like us to move forward on this project. I think it generates significantly more tax revenue than we're getting. There's zero possibility of major public service costs, particularly school costs. And I like the ground floor and I like the, I like the architecture and I'd like us to get moving on this. I think we need to get the maximum we can get under the pilots and I do agree with Nader that we want to nail down the retail component, but I view these as things we can and ought to do and get moving on this project.
Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. I like this project. I think the backside's okay. I think the setback from the street is fine. Surprisingly, Melissa and I are in agreement on a couple of things here that I think are worthwhile mentioning and first one's the undergrounding. Do you need to clarify what you're going to do with it? I would assume the answer's going to be what we want, so just have to make that happen. Also assuming that the lead silver rating includes accommodations for stormwater trash and recycling, so you probably ought to get together with your lead people and have a more clear affirmative statement about that. Other than that, I would agree with my colleague. I don't want to spend the next hundred and eighty days arguing over $25,000. Let's get this project done.
Okay, I've got a few comments, questions. One, I am concerned about the retail. When you have surface parking in a building, it doesn't leave much room for retail and so you end up with very shallow retail. The retail here is probably, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's about twenty-four feet, which is about as wide as this room is, which, twenty-nine, okay, still probably the ballpark of the depth of this room, which doesn't leave a lot of room for high-quality retail. I am concerned about a cultural spot, Rob. I know you mentioned that, but I want to have retail that's as compelling and as frequented as possible. Coffee shop's a great use, but I am concerned that a cultural space would have limited use at limited times. But I think the retail space is just not deep enough to really be as viable as it should be. So I have concerns about that. I certainly would like to look more into the parking and I know this isn't a heavily-used parking use. I do have questions about the pilot as well, as Nader has mentioned. I think the current proposal's for thirty years, although typically a building would have a life more like fifty years. So the pilot wouldn't be going, as I understand it at the present time, for the full length of the building, which concerns me. I do have concerns about the use as well. I think everyone can agree that assisted living is a use that we all need. There are a lot of uses we all need, but I think context is important, just like the BJ's Works where it is, you know, on the border with Arlington. I don't think that would work in the center of our town. And so I'd like to see uses that do the most they can to enliven and put people out in the street. And so I am a little concerned about the use. I also have some questions about the stairs in the front. I know, I imagine this would be ADA compliant, but I would like to ensure that, to the extent possible, things are at grade, that we don't create separation from the street to the building. I think the Broadway, Broadway's retail is not as successful as it could be because there was that of stairs between it and the actual entrances to the retail and the retail spaces. So I do have a question about the stairs. I share Dan's concern about the undergrounding of utilities, Melissa's as well. Siding, I know you've made great improvement in the architecture. It looks substantially better than I've seen it previously, that's why I applaud you for that. But it would be nice to continue that work and remove the remainder of the siding. And I would like to actually see a sidewalk section to kind of get a better idea. I know you mentioned seventeen feet, but you also have a tree pit, which typically takes up, I'm thinking about nine feet when you have back a curb, I think a foot and a half before the raised planter begins, and maybe seven feet for the planter. So that eats in pretty well to that space. So it'd be nice if we could see some kind of section or something that indicates how the sidewalk might work then. So anyway, I do have some concerns. I know you've made some good progress and I appreciate the work and I imagine others do as well that you've done since we last saw you. So I thank you for that. So where to go from here, I guess, would be the next question. Any thoughts from others on process going forward? I know some apparently want to have first reading. It sounds like there are certainly several in the group that would like to have first reading of this coming up and maybe that's, any other comments or input on that issue? It sounds, seems like there may be a little work as well that staff needs to do. I know they've got a number of issues and maybe some are larger than others, but it may be that staff needs a couple of weeks to work with the developer further on these issues? Mr. Shields? Or either one?
Well, in the staff report, we note that the earliest, we believe that from the planning staff's perspective, if the council's direction was to move forward, to put this on an agenda, the earliest that the staff work could be done, I think effectively would be February tenth. We do have ongoing discussions on the payment in lieu of taxes. I think we've made significant progress on that, but there are some initial, some issues that we are still, we still have under discussion. And, you know, there's, I don't think it's necessarily a question of time, it's a question of coming to a meeting of the minds on.
Go ahead, Jimmy Collins. That's, Nader, go ahead.
Yeah. This goes to the staff report again. We're dealing with an SC, so the exceptional usage language, I mean, has to mean something. So again, I'm still looking to see what that is. As I've mentioned before, certainly the financial is a piece of it, the use is a piece of it, the retail is a piece of that. So that hasn't quite all gelled, so I don't, you know, we can certainly advance it for first reading, but...
Your, your staff report after the summary does include the primary and secondary criteria that Mr. Novak alluded to. And we give you our analysis of that. You can compare our analysis with his analysis, but we've outlined word for word right out of the code what those primary and secondary criteria are.
Yeah, no, I was looking at fourteen. For example, fourteen is still an open item, so I like the factor by factor, but there's a couple that are still pending, is the point that I'm making.
Like, I guess we really don't need to make a decision tonight since there's ongoing discussion and the earliest would be the tenth, and so we don't really need to make a decision tonight as to whether it'd be the tenth or whether it needs additional time. So, I mean, unless there's further comment now on that issue, go ahead, Nader, Mary Beth.
If I can have, if I can make one suggestion, Mayor Tarter, and that's potentially the EDC also look at this. On land use, I think I raised some comments about what it would do to adjacent parcels and land consolidation and whether in fact, from the staff's perspective, this is the best and highest use. And assuming that it is, then I think we need further refinement on the pilot, which would also be a function of the EDC normally. So that's something that the EDC may want to take on. Do I throw that open for other council members?
I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, so when does the EDC plan to meet next and would have time to discuss this?
Well, we, we ended up canceling the EDC meeting that was scheduled because of the weather on Tuesday. And right now, we have rescheduled for Monday before the council meeting at six, I believe. This is our time. So we already have one development presentation. We can potentially add this on for discussion. Why do you, sorry to detract here, why, do you know how long the developer thinks they have for their presentation Monday?
Twenty minutes.
Why don't we do fifteen? That way we can do a total of, you know, half an hour for that project and half an hour of discussion for this and keep it moving.
So at 6:00 PM, EDC meeting on Monday, January twenty-seventh to consider this and the West and Broad project?
That may be one way of doing it and splitting the time in half.
Okay.
And it would, it would give us a little bit of a buffer before our meeting starts.
I'd be in favor of that if that allows staff enough time to dig into that particular issue that Mr. Brugge brought up.
Okay, Mary Beth?
I just wondered if Mr. Novak had any responses to any of the questions that people asked him. Do we have time to do that?
Well, if we do, let's do, let's do it very brief because we're, we're behind schedule. We have our own council work session that's going to begin when this ends, so it would be very, very brief.
Well, I'll try to be brief. You know, in terms of just a couple of issues that were raised, I won't go through them all. In terms of undergrounding utilities, we certainly intend to underground them in front of our site. The question is, they have to go across Broad Street to the other side. And we've asked as part of our pilot if there would be some consideration of sharing in those costs that carry them to the other side, not across our property. We'll take care of everything on our frontage, but across the other side of Broad Street. The parking, we have had a parking study done and that has been submitted to the city and that shows that our parking is adequate by ITE standards. The city's parking code's a little different. The, you know, I guess, you know, rather than go through the rest of these issues, I feel compelled frankly to raise a concern that I have. The property was put under contract in January of 2013. We've been trying to get to a first reading frankly, so that we could go out to the boards and commissions, so that we could get some good dialogue and kind of roll sleeves up meetings on this. And that has, you know, it's been a year and that has not occurred. I met with staff, I met with EDC, I met with many people before we even submitted an application in June. So I certainly respect the workload that the city council has and the Planning Commission has, and please don't interpret my, my words otherwise, but we are running to the end of our rope here with our contract and frankly, we, I've not seen the staff report that you're all referring to. So, you know, I, I don't know how we can really make progress without having this given a first reading and allow us to go to the boards and commissions and work on it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Novak.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
Thank you. Seems like there's two areas. One area is, you know, specific concerns about parking or architecture or undergrounding or whatever. The second area is, is this the kind of use that I would like to see or you would like to see or anybody else would like to see? On the first, as I said earlier, I think the staff report gives a good roadmap to help boards and commissions work through some of these and intensify the negotiations. You know, the project may not have gelled. The reason it may not have gelled is that we haven't sort of put a clock on it. As to the use question, I personally am not, you know, qualified to speak for the whole community on whether it thinks this is a good use or not. I have my own personal opinions. The only way I know to find out something useful about that that would guide my final vote would be to put it out to boards and commissions and get some sense of whether the community thinks this is the kind of use that they want at this location. So for that reason, I would support the EDC taking this under its wing for January twenty-seventh and trying to get to the point where before the February tenth meeting, we felt like we had the answers to at least the specific questions, parking and so forth, enough to consider it for first reading. And, you know, we can consider it and reject it or we can consider it and approve it for first reading.
Thank you very much. Karen?
I just wanted to add that if we're working in the hypothetical example on the schedule that Mr. Duncan has just described, I want to make sure I understand the corresponding schedule that follows after that and whether we have to then, you know, finalize this within sixty days.
Okay, and we'll get a formal response to you on that. I will say that the sixty-day rule that I alluded to early is a specific measure relating to comprehensive plan amendments. But I do want to just confirm if there's any clock that occurs on an SC. And I don't recall there being one in the past, but I want to just confirm that.
I guess maybe beyond that, I would like to sort of see...
To understand the roadmap, sure.
I would like to see the roadmap.
Okay.
Okay, let's wrap this up. I guess, Dave, you had a comment and then Nader as well.
Yeah, let me just add my voice to getting some clarity on where we stand with the pilot and the, and I would also say that the undergrounding question with regard to the impact off-site is not completely resolved either, but I think it's probably best handled in the form of the EDC and if we can get that done. If, in fact, as City Manager says, just the meeting of minds and I think we would all be more comfortable if we understood what that agreement was or where the line was drawn before we set it out. Otherwise, I think that, I'm with my colleague here and others that have heard from that, spent seven months looking at this already. It doesn't get the building built.
Okay. Dave, last comment?
Yeah, my assumption would be we move forward on February the tenth. Otherwise, there ought to be a very good reason why we don't. And I'm glad the EDC will take a look at it, but we got to get moving on this.
All right, thank, last comment?
Yeah, this is not a comment. This is just so we get clarity on what's going to happen at the EDC. So we're going to be talking about the usage, the use of, use of the properties adjacent to it as well and what this does for the block. Two, further discussion about the pilot, the length of the pilot and escalator clause. And then three, the issue of utilities and undergrounding across the street. Is there anything else that needs to go on the EDC agenda since we're talking about it and we're all here?
If you can do all that in twenty minutes.
I give you half an hour, Dan.
All right.
Okay, let's go ahead and wrap this up then. I think this concludes the joint work session of the Planning Commission. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's such terrible, horrible weather. And let's go ahead. Does anyone need a break or can we keep punching through? Need a break? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break and begin the committee work session.
That's what scares me.
Okay, could everyone please come to your seats and carry on the discussions outside if you're not going to stay here? Can we all sit down and continue on the meeting now? I know there's a bit more on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make sure we don't leave here without talking about the Budget and Finance Committee and when it would need to meet, since we all have everybody here. And if, and I'll say that now, I'll forget it, okay? Thanks.
Sure, I think there might be a section for comments at the end, but why don't we go ahead on our next item, which is the sale of the water proceeds?
What I've provided for the council is just a, a copy of the staff report and the resolution that the council adopted on December ninth and a note that we will have additional information at your upcoming work session scheduled for February fifth. We have invited the city's financial advisor to that meeting. They will be here and we are working very hard to have updated actuary information that will help inform the pension investment option. I can say this, just in terms of new information, that we do anticipate that the proceeds from the sale will be higher than the fourteen million that we've, we've discussed earlier. We're still paying bills, we, we still have receipts and so that number is not final and it's probably not wise to start throwing out a new number, but it will be higher than the fourteen million. And one thing that has worked... And one thing that has worked to increase the net proceeds from what we discussed over the summer is the cost of defusing the city's debt. And there are several big things that happened that improved that situation. And those occurred over the summer in negotiations with Fairfax Water in which a debt that was issued on behalf of all the wholesale customers by the D.C. Water is going to be assumed by Fairfax Water. And there was another debt issuance issued by the U.S. Treasury that the city paid off earlier than closing. And so, with those two debts taken off the books, that has had a positive impact on the defusing costs. And rising interest rates has also had a positive impact on our defusing costs. So, that's sort of the main driver as to what's allowed the proceeds number to climb. And that's good news, good news for the city. So, I won't rehash the three options that were discussed earlier in the year. I know that everybody here at the table heard those options and understood those options, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I think a key thing for tonight's discussion is if there's additional analysis that the council would like to have, please let us know so we'll be prepared for the February fifth work session.
Let me just ask, maybe before we get started, there are new people on council, obviously, who may not have had the benefit of as much discussion and analysis of the options. Is there a desire or need or request for particularly the new folks to go, for us to briefly go through the stated options or staff to do so?
I understand the options. I have some questions about them. Is this, will we get to that later?
We'll get to that pretty much now, I guess, since we're not going to go into the discussion about each one. Maybe we'll just go, if everyone feels they have an understanding of the options, do we want to go around the table and just get input or comments as to the options that are presented or if there are any additional ones that council would like staff to consider? Want to start with you, Mr. Duncan?
Okay, thanks. So, as I understand it, then at the February fifth meeting, having talked to Richard, we'll get information that will help us further explore the, what should we call it, the pension option. And his proposal for a belt and suspenders, I think is how he describes it, way to structure whatever we would put into the pension option so that we would be protected from collapses in the market along the lines of what happened in two thousand and eight. So, that's a statement, not a question. That's how I understand what we're going to find out on February fifth. The additional, I don't know if it's an additional option or just additional information, but as I've mentioned a couple of times before, I would love to know what other communities who have come into significant sums of money through whatever means, legal settlements or payments because of, you know, corporate relocations or, you know, windfall profits found in the situations of other communities and what they did with them. The only active example I can think of is the one I mentioned, I think, in Kingston, Tennessee, where environmental calamity that T.V.A. caused resulted in a substantial payoff to the local government, which they used, as I understood it, for infrastructure, schools, I think industrial zone development. I'm just, I'm looking for some comparative information about what other communities who find themselves in the position that we're in have done that helps us feel sure that the options that we have before us are, you know, the only ones that we want to consider.
Karen?
And I would just note, that is, that's part of our preparation for the fifth.
If I could just clarify what the outcomes we want from tonight are for this item?
Well, I mean, I think the idea is to really put forth all the options so that we can move to a vote on them. So, if there are additional, first off, if people need additional information to consider it, make that request tonight of staff so that they can provide it for us at our next meeting when we discuss this matter. Or if there are items that are not on this list that you want to be on this list, let staff know again so that we can have a complete list of options to be voted on. We can take some action coming up here, hopefully in the near future.
So, if I could clarify, the hope would be that we would bring this forward at the February tenth meeting?
Well, I tell you, I don't know if we've had, have we had a first reading on this yet? No. So, we need a first reading and then a second reading. So, I don't know scheduling-wise what dates that would put us in. But I presume sometime in February, we'd be able to have a second reading on this matter. Does the calendar work out that round?
Yeah, if there's consensus on the fifth in terms of the way to go, then we would prepare a budget amendment so that the proceeds could be appropriated. I don't think February actually is going to be a timeline to make the full appropriation because we won't have the full proceeds from the sale, net proceeds from the sale by the end of February. And so, I just note that.
We have the full proceeds?
Well, I think that with full reconciliation, I think May is probably when we will have, you know, really, all the bills will be paid, all the receipts will have been collected. There may still be some outstanding, you know, accounts that would be in collections at that point, but those would be, you know, just sort of the tail of the receipts. So, certainly the decision can be made in terms of what the policy will be. But the full wrap-up of the water fund is really going to go on through the end of this fiscal year.
Let me ask you this. When do we receive the gross proceeds? In other words, do we receive the money and then we have to pay bills out of it? When do we receive the gross proceeds? Because we can know that, you know, if the number's fourteen million, I imagine you can estimate that the number that we're going to pay out is no more than a million. And so, we could, for example, allocate ninety percent of that money at that time instead of waiting until every last bill was paid to get that money to work for us as soon as possible.
Yeah, I mean, we can provide that projection certainly earlier than by the end of February.
But when do we receive the gross proceeds?
Well, we've received all the, from the closing costs, that's all been done. And so, that money is sitting in a local government investment pool account in the city's name. It's not commingled with the rest of the city's monies. That's the lion's share of it. But there are bills to be paid and there's the final billing, which will be about two million dollars of receipts as well. And so, those are the things that are still in flux.
But it seems to me that we ought to consider not waiting till that last day to allocate the majority of the funds. I mean, it seems to me that we can make a decision as to what we want to do to it. And then, we can also decide how much of the gross proceeds we want to allocate at a certain point to it and how much we want to hold back as the reserves to make sure we can pay all the bills out of it. But it seems to me the most prudent fiscal thing to do is to go ahead and get that money to work for us as soon as possible, at least the bulk of it.
So, my request was, I wanted to better understand that timeline and the key decision points and when we're actually being asked to make a decision. This was just the previous resolution on the goals.
That's right.
Mary Beth?
Okay. So, on lines thirteen and fourteen, it says, "The proceeds should be set aside to produce the optimal long-term financial benefit for the city." And then, there are three options laid out here. I guess my concern is, if you look at option number two, we're talking about a capital project, pay-as-you-go. And it says, "Once the debt service is paid off in twenty years, there's no longer direct financial benefit to the taxpayers." I think that sort of brushes away that option pretty quickly because, for example, if we built a parking garage, then there would indeed continue to be financial benefit because there would be people coming to park and spending money in the city. So, the financial benefit is more than just the interest that can be generated from different things. So, that has been my concern about that one all along. It's just that it was brushed off so easily as a, not a long-term financial benefit. And maybe it goes to what Phil just said about what else have people done with this money to better their entire community, not just the financial side of it. I think that as a community, we voted for the water sale, knowing that the land was going to go to build our schools and economic development. And it's all part of a big, big picture that we're just talking about there. So, that we need to look at that money as part of the big hole, not just a little separate stash that we're going to put someplace.
Thank you, Nader.
Nothing other than I look forward to getting the numbers and just, I'll express my frustration that we don't have them yet.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, I think this is an item for the retreat discussion when people are fresh. It's not a ten P.M. item. It's too important for that. So, I would urge that this be added to the retreat. And I think Mary Beth raised a very good point. The descriptions of the options seem to drive toward one particular option. And I'm not satisfied that we really understand the pluses and minuses of each. And I think with regard to the pension option, there's absolutely no flexibility. Once you put it in, you can't get it out, and that's not sufficiently discussed. There are also some projections based upon actuarial projections, which can be wrong as often as they're right. So, it's not as sure as it would appear. And furthermore, the money that we allegedly save could easily be used for other than long-term purposes. So, I think there are some issues with each of these options and we need a more fulsome discussion. And I'm interested in the experience and expertise that our new council members bring because I think some fresh eyes on this might be useful as well.
Thanks. I would expect equal levels of precision in all the options that you've presented. So, if you have examples or a number certain for the pension fund that you could also have it for. Scenario two and three, I think others have talked about this already. I'm curious as to why land banking and loan bond guarantees and other things that we've talked about in the past have all disappeared off the table here. Was that because I've decided not to look at those things or what happened, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, land banking is, was not one of the options presented. I do think, you know, that's a whole different level of analysis and strategy expertise that I think we would need. And so, we don't have that capacity on hand to really model out what a land banking strategy, what a commercial investment strategy would look like for the city in terms of risk profile and benefit profile. And so, if that is an area that you want to explore, we do need to bring in some additional resources for that.
Well, I would then agree with my colleagues here that it's probably best discussed at the retreat.
And I am interested in that option being thoroughly pursued, as thoroughly pursued as the other options have been.
Anything else?
Is there further interest in that? I think it's going to be expensive to explore that. So, I do want to make sure that there's, and it could be a council retreat discussion about, you know, how far, what level of analysis we want. And so, maybe we can just reserve that discussion.
Okay, other comments? Mary Beth?
My last comment on this one is just, I want to make sure there's adequate time for the community to weigh in on their own optimal long-term uses.
Okay. Anything else? Let's go ahead and wrap this up then. And then, why don't we move on to council comments? Phil, you'd mentioned earlier about wanting to discuss the meeting schedule?
Right. Budget Finance Committee was going to try to get together, is, I think, going to try to get together before the retreat. And so, we're trying to find a time that would suit folks who are on that group or want to come to that meeting. The dates that were suggested were, Mary Beth, Karen, Wednesday after the Appointments Committee meeting next week?
Any Appointments Committee meeting is at seven thirty. We weren't sure of the time when we talked about that.
Seven thirty Appointments Committee meeting. And does anybody know how many appointments?
There's only one that I know of that we would interview. So, I could safely say that if we wanted to meet, we would be done by eight o'clock.
Mr. Chair, would that rush you too much or should we say, is eight o'clock safe to say?
No, I think eight o'clock is a good number, seven thirty.
Nader, how's that work for you? January twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth. So, we're proposing a pre-retreat retreat.
Right. We're going to be fully, we're going to be fully retreated before, no. It's just to, you know, get some information from Mr. LaConde and bring everybody up to the same point. Okay, so, I'll talk to the clerk and we'll notice a meeting on Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at eight P.M. for the Budget and Finance Committee and anybody who wants to come join us. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else, Dave?
I'll bring pizza.
Do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I do have a quick comment. I've noticed that the snow removal on the streets has been very inconsistent. Maple Avenue, for example, is a snow emergency route and it's basically an ice skating rink. In fact, on my way up here, there was a car stuck in the middle of Columbia and Maple. Some streets are better, which is good, but it seems to be very inconsistent. And frankly, there wasn't a lot of snowfall, so I don't understand why the streets aren't better. Thank you.
Okay, so, why don't we move on to the next item? We know we have a, Nader?
Before we do that, just on the agenda, I think some things moved around that we probably need to, we don't need to do it now. But this needs to get revised, I think, based on some of the discussions we had.
All right, is there anything you want to discuss at this point?
No, no, no. Just, I mean, I think the area, downtown area plan and then, you know, the Kensington, I think, might have gotten scheduled. So, or at least may get scheduled, so.
Okay. Well, Wyatt, maybe you could take note. Then, obviously, you-
We got the Kensington on the tenth. The downtown area plan, does the council want to have another work session on that before that goes out? That's what-
I think that's probably a good idea.
And then, we also added a resolution for Monday for the planning of-
That's right.
Okay.
Six P.M. EDC on the twenty-seventh, is that right? And is there a gang of eight meeting that night or not? It is the fourth Monday.
It is. I tell you, I don't know whether, I mean, we've really, I don't, we've really gotten into that yet, but we need to. So, I don't have an answer for you on that.
One thing, the superintendent and I have corresponded on that and we've, they, the schools have suggested February tenth. For the gang of eight.
Before at six o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. Just make sure a lot of these notices go out. I know everybody's supposed to have them on their calendar, but if you could punch out like an email reminder either the day before or that morning for all these, I think that'd be very helpful. So, why don't we go ahead and move on? We've had a whole bunch of people sitting back there and I can tell from the looks in your faces that you'd probably be out rather fighting a four-alarm fire than sitting here listening to us talk. So, we certainly appreciate your patience and spending time here with us and we thank you. Wyatt, maybe you could go ahead and maybe do a brief introduction. We can hear from some of the folks maybe here tonight with their thoughts before you go into closed session, if that's okay with everyone.
The, we do have on the agenda a closed session discussion of our contractual negotiations with Arlington County on our fire services agreement. Very briefly, that agreement is a three-way agreement with the county, the city and the volunteer fire department, whose representatives are here in the room. Very briefly, the discussions with the county at the high level in terms of finances with respect to the city have been centered around the county's view that the staffing levels that the city pays fifty percent of at the station have gone up. And so, they'd like the agreement to be revised to reflect those higher staffing levels. So, there's a cost increase to the city if we were to agree to that.
Could I interrupt you quickly, just briefly, Wyatt? I know this is a closed session item, so you're now going through the things that are appropriate for the public.
Well, I'm providing just an overview and then wanted to have a more in-depth discussion of the negotiating positions in closed session.
Okay.
And so, this is meant to be just a summary of the issues.
Okay.
Currently, the city pays a hundred percent of the costs of the station maintenance as well as the purchase and maintenance of the fire engines. So, there's a fire engine, a ladder truck, and there's also an ambulance that the volunteers have traditionally paid for. have traditionally paid for in terms of their participation in the agreement. When we go into closed session, we'll go into more details on each of these aspects of the agreement and kind of what the key points of our discussions are. Before we go into closed session, the volunteers are here, they're a party to this agreement, they have views on it, and I think it would be helpful for the council to hear from the volunteers about what they would like to see come out of this updated agreement as well. And so, Mr. Schaumberg, if, I don't know who your designated speaker is, but I assume it's you.
I'll speak.
This is Chief of the Falls Church Volunteers, Paul Schaumberg.
Thank you very much, and again, sorry to keep you all waiting. I think if we'd known there's many folks to be coming, we would have put you on first, but we appreciate your patience.
That's okay. As I was telling my colleagues this evening, it's always good to come to these things because you get an appreciation for what actually happens in city government. There's the aspect that we, you know, our perspective, I beg to differ, there is actually quite a bit. I do have a small handout that I'm just going to speak to, so I'd ask Wyatt to take one and maybe pass that around. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate the new members of the council. I haven't had a chance to meet some of you, and I do think that it's kind of neat, the political atmosphere of the city and the amount of citizen engagement that we have. I think that's one of the things that makes Falls Church a very special place to live. I know you guys are way past your planned agenda, so I'm going to be very brief with my comments, but what I do have to say this evening is very important. The three-party agreement discussions have been going on now for a little bit more than two years, by my clock about two and a half. And during that time, we've been raising a number of issues of concern that we have as a volunteer organization, and that's really what's outlined here in this document. I know that there are some other concerns that the city manager has relative to the city's position, and I'm sure he can discuss that with you all more directly. The outline that I have before you basically outlines, there's three columns there. The first column is our perception of today's reality. This is what actually takes place in the firehouse today, either by the existing contract or through practice. Admittedly, the current contract does not detail a lot of the activities and how things get done in the fire department, so that's one of the things that we're hoping to improve upon with the new agreement. But that column kind of articulates where we're at today. The middle column is actually articulating what Arlington's proposal would be, and I've tried to make it clear by illustrating in red or green whether we think these changes that are proposed are favorable or unfavorable. It is a very complicated and detailed agreement. These are only some specific examples of areas where we have concern. There are other areas as well, but this is really the bread and butter of it, if you will. Finally is, excuse me, what our proposal would be for a more managed approach. The proposal, as we see it from Arlington right now, is increasing the commitment that is required of an individual in order to participate as a volunteer, but it is also boxing in and reducing the amount of activity at which they can participate. And just to use an analogy for you, think about if you were to go to a bank and somebody would tell you that I'm going to pay you $100 for your investment. The guy across the street will pay you $200 for that same investment, or for half that investment. Where would you go? You'd go to the bank that provides you the greater return on your investment. The problem we have here today is we need the ability to recruit and retain quality volunteers, and we can't do that in a system where volunteers are not allowed to participate and where the barriers to entry are so high as what is proposed here. So, you know, we've tried over the last two years to try and make headway in this area. I'm becoming increasingly frustrated with kind of the lack of momentum, at least from our perspective on these issues, and I'm here to employ the city to basically come to our aid. There is no incentive for Arlington to move on these issues without the backing of the city, and we are your fire department. So if you want us to be here, we need your help.
Much, do we have questions from council for the chief? I know, Dave, you participate with this and are an expert at it.
Yeah, as I understand it, there are really three categories that we're going to need to work through. The first is maintenance of the station, the acquisition and type of fire equipment, and then the activities that qualified volunteers. They're not asking for a shortcut on qualifications. They're as qualified as the career, but what activities are they permitted to do? And if you look at the green at the right-hand bottom, this is what they believe would maximize their service to our community. That is, they could place an additional engine company in service. That makes sense. If there are two fires, you might need the other fire truck. They would provide volunteer medical tactical support to our police department that now would have to call for an ambulance to respond as opposed to have the medical support right there with the tactical squad. And third, they want to be able to provide advanced life support, which they're trained and certified to do. So, to me, what we're fundamentally dealing with is Arlington has a way of doing things, a model which is highly career-oriented and is not at all receptive to the volunteers. They're in a three-way agreement with us, and to me, the issue is what makes the most sense financially, and this is what I look for from the city manager, with regard to the maintenance of the station and the acquisition of the equipment, and then how do we maximize the role of qualified volunteers to provide additional service to the community? Is that a fair summary of the issues?
Yes, Mr. Snyder. I think that's very well put. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mary Beth?
Does anyone else have an agreement with Arlington like us? Are we the only?
No, we are definitely unique in that sense, and it is unusual, actually, for municipality to have a contract for fire services with another municipality, but in this case, it's kind of because of the evolution of the fire service in this region that we've partnered with Arlington.
Additional comments, questions? I'd like, if I could, just to thank you all for all the service you do for this community. You're kind of the unsung heroes of the Falls Church. We appreciate it. I've had my kids' birthday parties down there, and my kids have loved seeing and being with you guys, and so you do a great service for the community. We're all very proud of you and very happy you're involved with our community. Unfortunately, given the fact that we're going to have a closed session, it wouldn't be closed if all of you were in the session, so I'm just going to have to thank you for coming out tonight. Again, I apologize for having you sit around so long, but thanks once again for all the great service you've done, and we'll do all we can to advance the cause and do the best we can for everyone. So, appreciate it once again, and we'll be talking to you.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, thanks, Falls Church. Yeah, we're going to stay here. I need to get this computer up. Give me a minute. Yeah.
If we go do the motion, go to the close session. I want to go ahead and do a motion. Is that on mic?
Well, we'll do that on mic and all that, in public. All right. Okay, so do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I move the, yeah.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I second that. Second.
It's Mary Beth's first seconding. I think this is good. Okay. So, and passed by a voice vote, I guess we need to have the voice vote first. Yeah, let's go ahead and have the voice vote. Oh, I have to read the motion. Upon motion made by Councilmember Z, seconded by Councilmember Conley, and passed by a voice vote of City Council, council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A29 for the discussion of the award of a public contract involving expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussions of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation, negotiated strategy of the public body. This is for fire service contract negotiations. Councilmember Brew?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Z?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. So, that I think is it. So we're now in closed session, correct?
Yep.